Morning, Mayor.
Morning.
Okay.
Good morning.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen. All right. Pursuant to applicable law in my determination that attendance by remote means is necessary because an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to the declared public health disaster caused by COVID-19, this meeting is being conducted via video conference. We will now have a roll call to establish quorum. Let me remind the aldermen to please make sure your microphones are unmuted when the clerk calls your name and then re-mute yourself. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laszlo.
Present.
Alderman Hopkins.
Present.
Alderman Dow.
Here.
Alderman King.
Present.
Alderman Hairston.
Present.
Alderman Sawyer.
Here.
Aldwin Mitchell.
Present.
Aldwin Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Zelaski Garza.
Here.
Alderman Thompson.
Here.
Miss me.
Oh, sorry, Alderman Harris.
Present.
Got you. Alderman Cardenas.
Hi.
Alderman Quinn.
Here.
Alderman Burke.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here in West Englewood. Good morning.
Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Moore.
Present.
Alderman Curtis.
Present.
Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Brookins.
Here.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Present.
Alderman Tifara.
Present.
Alderman Scott.
Present.
Alderman Sichio Lopez.
Presence.
Alderman Maldonado.
Present.
Alderman Burnett.
Present.
Alderman Urban.
Alderman, I would say yes.
Alderman Urban is present.
Alderman Urban, Alderman Talafara.
Present.
Alderman Boyas.
Present, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cardona.
Present.
Alderman Wagisak.
Here.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Present.
Alderman Austin.
Here.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Viegas.
Present.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is present.
Got you. Alderman Metz.
Present.
Alderman Spassato.
Alderman Maldonado is present.
I got you, Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Spassato.
Next Spassato is here.
Alderman Nugent.
Present.
Alderman Vasquez.
Present.
Alderman Napolitano.
Present.
Aldman Riley.
Present.
Aldman Smith.
Present.
Aldman Tony.
Present.
Aldman Gardner.
Present.
Aldman Kapelman.
Present.
Aldman Martin.
Present.
Aldman Osterman.
Present.
Aldman Haddon.
Present.
Aldman Silverstein.
Present.
Your Honor, we have a quorum present. Peter?
Your Honor, there are 49 members present.
There are 49 members present. We have a quorum. And we will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States
of America
of America and to the Republic
for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America.
God bless America.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which is going to be delivered by Pastor Gene Stevens of Soul City Church. Pastor, the floor is yours.
Good morning, everyone. It is such a blessing to be with you this morning. And in a year when we have all navigated so many unknowns, in a year when we have all navigated so many losses, in a year when we have all navigated new leadership pressures and pivots, our human tendency is to hold on and to clench for control. And this morning, I want to invite you to take a different posture, to instead take a posture of letting go, of hopeful surrender, of trusting belief. So wherever you are, to just, I invite you this morning to open your hands as we pause, to offer yourself the loving kindness of a deep inhale and exhale. Oh, God, we ask that you be present in the midst of our unknowns. God, we ask that you be present in the midst of our losses. We ask that you be present in the midst of our pressures and pivots as leaders. Would you give us grace and mercy and love to lead from a position of humble surrender? God, we come to you because our world is reeling yet again with news of another loss of life that reaches us all, news of flourishing lives now diminished, of precious people harmed, of pain imposed not only upon the victims and their families, who bear now the immediate brunt of such a devastating loss, but also upon our nation. For we are a connected people, and this hurt and this grief, it touches us all. Oh, God, might you engage our imagination and move our hearts to compassion. Help us to not interact with these casualties as just another news story or statistic. But, God, stir in us a holy empathy to rise up and stand for justice, because we acknowledge these losses as sisters and brothers, flesh and blood, divine image bearers, irreplaceable individuals, whole losses will leave gaping holes now in homes and friendships, in workplaces and churches, in schools and organizations and neighborhoods. And, God, thank you that you do not run away from the brokenhearted, but you instead move ever towards those in need. And this is our prayer for our great city, God. Would you heal and protect our city? And would you help us to do what you do, to run towards the brokenhearted and to offer your healing? I pray for my brothers and sisters this morning. In this meeting, God, would you give us eyes to see one another with grace and compassion? Would you give us ears to hear one another with curiosity and love? And would you give us hands to help one another with generosity and care? I pray blessing and gratitude over each leader gathered here today. God, I bless them for their service to this city. And as we surrender to you this day, fill us up, we pray. Amen and amen.
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 Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Now we'll have public comment. Madam Clerk.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for all the medic review. The first speaker is Imran Dasai.
Morning, everyone. My name is Imran Dasai. I work in Rush Hospital in Chicago, and Chicago is my home from last three years. Today, I have a grave concern about the human rights situation in my native country, India. I am calling in support of resolution R 2020-53. This is a resolution passed unanimously through the Health and Human Relations Committee. This resolution has been already publicly supported by three congressmen. Also, it has been enrobed by former Alderman Omay Pavar, the only Indian-American ever elected to Chicago City Council. This resolution is supported by over 120 local businesses and over 25 organizations. I am an eyewitness and victim of the 2002 program in which the current Prime Minister Narendra Modi asked top police officials to let burn and kill innocent people. Imagine a mob is burning your house and trying to enter to kill you and your family, and no one is responding to 911. I ran my own life for several days in open fields without the proper food and shelter during 2002 madness. BJP-led government successfully plotted hatred in common people, which is hard to mitigate in upcoming years. Now they give frequent boost to their plotted hatred by inflammatory speeches, introducing discriminatory laws, and showing minorities as a traitor and termites of the nation. According to annual report on global political rights and liberties, India's status went from free country to partially free country in 2020. Cracking down on journalists and protesters who stand against BJP-led government become a routine in India. India become the world leader in internet shutdowns. In 2020, out of total 155 internet shutdowns globally, India alone accounted for 109 internet shutdowns. The highest was the Yemen with six shutdowns. More than 273 million religious minorities, around 83% of United States total population in India, are living in constant fear and facing open discrimination created by current ruling BJP party. As of now, a similar resolution has passed in eight cities across the country, including Seattle and San Francisco. This resolution will send a strong message to the fascist BJP ruling government that Chicago will not tolerate human rights violations and serve as a wake-up call for stumbling Indian democracy. I have sincere request to all of you to vote yes to pass this resolution, R 2020-53. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dasai, for your comments. Our next speaker is Amitav Mittal.
Good morning, counsel. Good morning, Mayor. My name is Amitav Mittal. I'm a resident of city area Chicago for the past 36 years. I am calling and requesting all to vote no on resolution R 2020-583. You will hear there are words like fascism, nationalism, and nationalists, which will be loosely thrown around against the world's largest working secular democracy and world's third largest religion. Let's ignore such hurtful words and focus on positive. R 2020-583 was first proposed in August 2020 with condemning Citizenship Amendment Act of 2019. And since then, it has evolved and is adding various laws that have been passed and vetted by the duly-elected Constitution Assembly of India, Parliament of India, vetted by the Supreme Court of India. First, is the city of Chicago going to debate laws of a sovereign democratic secular nation, which is 8,000 miles away, or concentrate on issues of managing city of Chicago during these pandemic times? Valuable time of this council has been consumed by discussion on this topic since August 2020. This resolution has created a divide amongst the people of Indian origin, who reside here peacefully for the past five decades, while the leadership, which is supposed to bring the peace and harmony, is discussing this hateful resolution. Citizenship Act of 1955, which was drafted by stalwarts like the India's first Prime Minister Jahar Lal Nehru, Dr. B.R. Ambedkar, the writer of the Constitution of India, and the first voice-royal Lord Mark Button, with approval of the first premier of Pakistan, Muhammad Ali Jinnah, and Assembly of Pakistan, and United Nations. Provision of this law expired in 1955, leaving over 2 million people stateless. All that Citizenship Amendment Act, which has amended the law, is to allow dignity to 2.5 million people to apply and get citizenship while they were living in India for 70 years, stateless. This sugar-coated cyanide resolution, R 2020, has been sponsored by religious extremist groups. It is highly deceptive title honoring India while it is full of hate and false allegations against secular democratic India, its institution and mandate of 1.35 billion citizens. In words of Paul Harris, the founder of one of the world's largest service organization and a native of Chicago, "Let's take the test." Is it based on truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it bring goodwill and better friendship? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? In my opinion, this resolution fails on all four accounts. I humbly urge you, request you, and appeal to your inner conscience to do away with this hate and lie and vote no on resolution R 2020-583. Thank you so much. God bless America.
Thank you, Mr. Mittal, for your comments. Our next speaker is Sachin Tripathi.
Dear Mayor and council members, good morning, and thank you so much for everything you do for the city of Chicago and its people. As a concerned member of Indian community in America, I wish to express my deep disappointment at this politically motivated and hate-based resolution, R 2020-583, which is not only dangerously one-sided, but also misinformed and lacking any historical or social context of situations in India. I request you to vote no to this resolution. This resolution began with honoring India's democracy, but quickly adopted a tone of unwarranted and harsh criticism. It criticized Citizenship Amendment Bill of India. The CAA Citizenship Amendment Act is needed to protect fundamental rights of persecuted religious minorities fleeing to India from Pakistan, Afghanistan, and Bangladesh to escape ethnic cleansing, to save their women from getting kidnapped, raped, forcefully converted. Do we have any empathy towards them? UAE-designated terrorist organization, CARE, Council on American Islamic Relations, and other supporters of this resolution demonize everyone who challenges their falsehood and oppose this beguiled resolution. They label them as the fastest Hindu nationalists and et cetera to save a life. I thank Dr. Jacob from Clergy Council of Chicago for extending his support to oppose this resolution. We have support from all religious communities to oppose this resolution. Since this resolution is based on propaganda, it is polarizing South Asian community, and so the leaders of South Asian community staged a huge protest against this resolution in Ward 49 last Monday, that too during the pandemic time. Just in last week, America has seen reports of crime against Asians in California and Atlanta. Just two days ago, fresh reports of shooting in Colorado has shook the nation. In the middle of such grim reality, polarizing communities, spreading hate, is not something Chicago City Council should be encouraging. We need unity and harmony, and as a member of Indian community, I'm committed to participating in creating a peaceful America. It is unfortunate reality that organizations like CARE, who are openly spreading hate, are well-funded to get their bidding done. We don't have that kind of fund, but we have the truth. I place my trust and hope in the wonderful council members of Chicago City Council to urge and urge to vote no or abstain from the voting of this resolution, because this is based on hate and propaganda. We need your help to defeat these lies and hate campaigns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tripathi, for your comments. Our next speaker is Sue Sporty.
Hello, my name is Sue Sporty, and I'm a member of a church, which is one of some 60 congregations that are part of the Community Renewal Society. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the Empowering Communities for Public Safety Ordinance, which seeks to establish civilian oversight of the police. This proposal has been worked on, prayed over, revised. It has been the subject of countless in-person and Zoom meetings over the past five years, and it deserves your serious consideration. We are not a bunch of leftists, nor a bunch of rightists. We're not all community organizers or activists. We are mostly regular people, trying to create a system or structure that will lead to greater trust and greater cooperation between the police and the community it is sworn to serve and protect. We hope to bring about a time in the city of Chicago where parents of color will no longer need to have the talk with their children about steering clear of the police, where regular people in all parts of the city can feel safe from the police actions in their homes, in their cars, on their porches. We seek a time when regular, law-abiding citizens can see the police as allies. While each of you may share this broad vision, we have not seen much movement towards it under a business-as-usual system of responsibility and authority. So coalitions of people formed to seek possible paths to accomplish these and other goals related to policing in Chicago. We sought voices from all kinds of regular people and from those with particular kinds of expertise, lawyers, people with knowledge of policing, people from other cities, academics. We look for best practice. And notably, two coalitions have come together, forming common cause for the good of the city of Chicago. We understand that you do have lived experience about what works in Chicago, but we also understand that what works in Chicago is not working now. Empowering voices that are not usually listened to can help bring about transformation. And transformation in the way policing is done in Chicago is what is needed if we are to become a safe and fair community. We urge you to support the joint ordinance put forth by GAPA and CARPER. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sporty, for your comments. Our next speaker is Rosemary Davy.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot and Chicago aldermen. My name is Rosemary Davy, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the Chicago Alliance for Animals, more than 2,800 members. The following is a statement from Ida McCarthy, who is the Illinois Director of the Companion Animal Protection Society, or CAPS for short. Hello, city council members. I'm writing to you regarding ordinance number SO 2020-2827, regulating pet shops in Chicago. CAPS has investigated Pet Love Pet Center, Pocket Puppies, and Park Pet Shop. These are our findings. Pet Love. Pet Love used to sell dogs from Hobo Canine Rescue, which was a fake rescue run by Jack's Puppies. They now use Pet Connect, another fake rescue. Last week, we had a consumer complaint on Pet Love. The consumer purchased a puppy, and she has now spent more than $2,000 on veterinary bills. The dog has severe allergies, which leaves him bald in spots, and they can't figure out what the dog is allergic to. Also, she was a victim of quote-unquote "leased to own." She is actually leasing the dog, which means if she defaults on the payments, they can take the dog away. New York, California, Nevada, Washington, Indiana, and New Jersey have all banned pet leasing. They try to offset sky-high prices for the dogs being sold. She will end up paying almost $5,000 for her dog, and she has 27 more payments to make. Pocket Puppies. Pocket Puppies sells dogs from a fake rescue as well. The rescue is called Dog Mother. They also use Bob Mackey TLC breaths out of Oklahoma. In December 2020, he had 253 dogs and 82 puppies at his puppy mill, according to inspection reports. Park Pet Shop cherished pets. Park Pet Shop also uses Dog Mother, the fake rescue. All three of these stores are fraudulently selling puppies in Chicago. We urge Mayor Lightfoot, Chairman Sawyer, Vice Chairman Kapelman, and the Committee on Health and Human Relations to allow this humane ordinance to be voted upon as soon as possible. It's for the safety of our consumers as well as our companion animals. Thank you for consideration. Respectfully, Ida McCarthy. Founded in 1992, the Companion Animal Protection Society, or CAPS, is the only national nonprofit organization dedicated exclusively to protecting companion animals from cruelty in pet shops and puppy mills. CAPS actively addresses the abuse and suffering of pet shop and puppy mill dogs through investigations, education, media relations, legislative involvement, puppy mill dog rescues, consumer assistance, and pet industry employee relations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Davy, for your comments. Our next speaker is Sunil Pohar.
Dear city council, I'm wishing you all very well and want to thank you for your continued service. My heart goes out to all families who lost their loved ones during hate crimes occurring across various states in the USA, most recently in Atlanta and Colorado. I would like to urge you all to vote no or abstain from Chicago resolution honoring India's independence and democracy, if you do not have the sufficient information. If you vote for this without due investigation, you'll have your own way to become a party of violence against Christians, Hindus, Sikhs, or Austrians in the neighborhood. I hope the right and correct sense will prevail. The city of Chicago has a responsibility towards providing the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. This draft not only falls short of the truth, but in fact strives to sell lies about the largest democracy in the world. It is a mischievous resolution meant to mislead aldermen and alderwomen such as you. This resolution has already done enough damage to the city in the name of coming together as South Asians. This resolution has divided the community down the middle. This meeting, and the previous council meetings, are proof of that. I'm afraid if this resolution is passed, this chasm will only increase, and hate crimes and cancel culture will only increase in Chicagoland, the land of Lincoln. This resolution is based on malicious information, and it will be extremely unfortunate if the city passes the resolution and contributes to propagating lies and breaking our society. I'm traumatized to learn that extremist forces are paving their way into American society based on the baseless narrative brought forward. As a professional and a person of South Asian descent, I can vouch for that. India is a country that follows Vasudhava Kuttumbagam, the whole world is one family, and does not discriminate against its citizens based on religion, faith, ethnicity, et cetera. During this pandemic, when every country is trying to vaccinate their populace, India is standing true to the motto and trying to help the world family. As of February 18, 2021, India sent nearly 22 million free doses of COVID vaccine to 20 countries, with more in the pipeline. Pakistan, Bangladesh, Afghanistan, Maldives are Islamic nations that have received free vaccines from India. Seychelles, a Catholic nation that has been similar beneficiary. India will now stand up to meet vaccine requirements of the entire world, including United States. Are we here to teach lessons to India on human rights? I request the council to make an informed decision on this resolution against an important democratic ally. It is crucial that the strong democracies in the world, namely United States and India, stay united, not only against external threats and terrorism, but also common health challenges such as this devastating pandemic. I request and I urge everyone to vote no or abstain on this resolution. Thank you so much. God bless America.
Thank you, Mr. Pohar, for your comments. Our next speaker is Kiran Gajendra.
Good morning, Mayor, President, and the council members. I'm here to oppose resolution R 2020-583, an anti-India resolution, and ask the council members to vote no to this resolution. I'm not sure where I should start. If I should address this as a Chicago city resolution or going by the latest news, a resolution sponsored by the Council on American Islamic Relations, known as CARE. I would like to take this opportunity to quote directly from yesterday's Sun Time article, CARE has helped draft, financed, and has heavily lobbied a hate resolution to propagate its religious extremist agenda. A self-acclaimed flag barrier of this resolution, CARE has been declared a terrorist organization by the United Arab Emirates due to its association with the terrorist group Hamas. Why is the council entertaining such Western interest groups? There's a famous saying, "The only one who wants you to forget that you have been robbed is the thief." This resolution condemns India on the Citizenship Amendment Act and the changes in Jammu and Kashmir. When finally, India stands up to be the beacon of hope in the East, just like the United States has been in the West, and takes responsibility for the most persecuted, this resolution criticizes India for being the savior of hundreds of thousands of human lives. India is the world's largest and vibrant democracy, and the freedom to protest is not only allowed, but respected. However, vandalism, destruction of public property, and other forms of violence should not be supported. I would like to bring to the council's attention that Indian government permitted the former protesters to hold a peaceful protest on India's Republic Day on January 26, 2021. The rally quickly turned violent, resulting in massive vandalism to public property, causing significant injuries to 395 policemen. Like the recent events with the US Capitol, the protesters destroyed a symbol of the country's history. However, some of the protesters in India went even beyond that by burning buses, destroying public property, and using weapons to harm the public and the police. Even after violent protests, the Indian government did not take extreme actions to preserve democracy and the rights to protest. Is this not an outstanding example of a country standing up to the rights of its people? This resolution, single-handedly, created a large chasm and polarized our community by wadding into a political arena it knows little about. It has created a hostile environment for people of Asian origin in Chicagoland by spreading unverified information and harmful stereotypes about India's government and Indians. For these reasons, I ask the council to vote no to this factually inaccurate and deeply divisive hate resolution, with no relevance to the important challenges our city faces during this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gajendra, for your comments. Our next speaker is Kobe Guileri.
Hello, my name is Kobe Guileri. I'm with the Chicago Alliance Against Racist and Political Repression, and I'm calling to urge all other persons present
to urge all other persons present and not present to support the Empowering Communities for Public Safety ordinance. This ordinance is the result of nearly 10 years of tireless work on the part of hundreds of different community organizations, unions, churches, and just concerned individuals. And it has the support of hundreds of thousands of people in Chicago who are demanding police accountability, who are demanding that the police be held accountable for the brutality for the murder that they've inflicted on civilians in Chicago. And this work has already been done by us, by our lawyers, by our people, by the families of people who've been harmed by the police and by people who've been harmed by the police themselves. So we don't need another useless council that is just gonna do what the mayor says or that is gonna allow the police to investigate themselves. Because something that's been clear historically and that is becoming more clear to more people as time goes on is that no mayor is gonna hold the police accountable and that the police will not hold themselves accountable. We've seen in this city, in Chicago, when Fred Hampton was assassinated by CPD, Mayor Richard Daley tried to cover that up. When Laquan McDonald was killed by CPD, Mayor Rahm Emanuel tried to cover that up. And most recently, when Angelique Young was assaulted by CPD, the current mayor, Lori Lightfoot, who is on this call, tried to cover that up as well. So this is something that we need the mayor to get out of the way of. We need communities to be empowered over what public safety looks like in their own communities because the people who are living in these situations, who are living in black and brown communities, know what is best for themselves, for their children, and for their families. And because of that, I'm urging you all to support the ECPS bill. And the work that our communities are doing has brought us to this point, has brought us to the negotiations table with all these older persons. And I'm very grateful to the ones that have supported us so far. And I say to the rest that you need to get with us and support what the people are demanding right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guileri, for your comments. Our next speaker is Jitendra Diganukar.
Diganukar, please press star six on your phone to unmute. Madam Clerk, perhaps we can move on to the next speaker if the current speaker is having difficulty unmuting themselves.
Our next speaker is Shirin Ahmad.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Honorable Chairman, I urge you to vote yes on R 2020-583, the Chicago Resolution Honoring India's Republic and Democracy. This resolution passed unanimously through the Health and Human Relations Committee. It has been publicly supported by Congresswoman Jan Schakowsky, Congressman Chewie Garcia, and Congresswoman Marie Newman. It has been endorsed by former Alderman Amiya Pawar, the only Indian-American ever elected to Chicago City Council. It is supported by over 120 local businesses and over 25 organizations, including the Chicago Indo-American Democratic Organization, Hindus for Human Rights, CARE, Seek Save Our Foundation of Chicago, Human Rights Watch Chicago, Amnesty International, and Asian Americans Advancing Justice. The resolution was negotiated by Deputy Mayor Samir Mayker and includes a paragraph copied and pasted from Joe Biden's website and a paragraph from the federal government's U.S. Commission on International Religious Freedom 2020 Report on India. It has been supported by Chicago's own Lupe Fiasco and two-time Oscar nominee Michael Shannon. Many Trump supporters from the suburbs have been attacking this resolution. Groups like the Republican Hindu Coalition in Carroll Stream, Illinois oppose this resolution. It should be noted that the group brought Steve Bannon, Trump advisor and white supremacist, to Chicago in June 2019 and named him a co-chair of the group. Opponents to this resolution have used Chicago as a base to spread hate, bringing together supremacist ideologies. Longer, more detailed resolutions have passed in eight cities across the country, including Seattle, San Francisco, and suburban Riverdale, Illinois. Chicago is a sanctuary city that welcomes all regardless of their background or faith. I am a victim of this violence in India almost three decades ago, and the city of Chicago has provided me a safe haven. Back in the days in India, the killings were sporadic, and there may have been limited accountability. But now, through a series of new laws, discrimination against minorities is becoming systematic. I'm lucky enough to call Chicago my safe haven for the last 20 years, but billions of others are not so fortunate. And it is our responsibility to stand by those oppressed people. If you have any questions about the resolution, please read the text. Do you really want to vote against a resolution that, and I quote, "rejects violence in the name of any faith, condemns all supremacist thoughts, calls for an end of divisions along faith lines?" I urge you to vote yes on the India resolution, R 2020-583, and stand up for...
Thank you, Ms. Ahmad. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Jitendra Diganuka. Our next speaker is Phyllis Leon.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good morning, City Council members, Alderman Dowell, and Mayor Lightfoot. My name is Phyllis Leon, and I am here to raise awareness regarding yet another mega-development in the South Loop and to ask you to block its approval. One central is a proposal from a Wisconsin developer who wants the state to pay $6.5 billion, with a B, dollars, to support a platform for his private development over the metro tracks just south of Grand Park. As a reference to the order of magnitude this number represents, the city of Chicago's budget for 2021 is $12.8 billion to serve the needs of more than 2.6 million residents. If allowed to proceed, this project will add additional tax burden to each of the 12.6 million Illinois taxpayers, 2.7 of whom are your constituents. How did this happen? The Wisconsin developer Bob Dunn hired the same lobbyists used by ComEd to get Mike Madigan to support a bill. They went around our elected officials in Springfield and undercover of darkness, Mayor Lightfoot's words, not mine, and slipped authorization for a $6.5 billion tax dollar subsidy into the state budget. Our elected representatives were so offended, they sent a protest letter. At that time, Mr. Dunn claimed he needed the legislation to get railroad rehabilitation and improvement financing. This is not true. Nearly two years later, no RRIF application has been filed by Mr. Dunn. Dunn also claims we need the state to finance a transit hub in this location, but urban planner experts in transportation and urban planning agree this is not the location for an effective and efficient transit hub. And Crane's Chicago Business says, and I quote, "It doesn't make sense. It didn't make sense before the pandemic, and it makes no better sense now." The Chicago Tribune, which initially was supportive, wrote in February, "If Landmark had some rock-solid rationale to devote a massive chunk of money from Illinois cash-starved coffers for a new South Loop transit hub, they would have come out with it. They haven't because it isn't there." Dunn will be asking for approval to quadruple his existing building rights so he can create a quarter-mile-long, seven-story condo.
Thank you, Ms. Leon, for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Junaid Ahmed.
Thank you for this opportunity, Honorable Mayor. Dear Aldermen and Alderwomen, I strongly support Resolution R 2020-583 and urge you to vote yes for the resolution today. The updated resolution was negotiated thanks to the Deputy Mayor Samir Mayker, who consulted the resolution broadly across the community, and now it is one and a half pages and includes language word by word from Joe Biden's website. This resolution passed unanimously through the Health and Human Relations Committee. It has been publicly supported by Congresswoman Jan Schakowsky, Congressman Chewie Garcia, and Congresswoman Marie Newman. It has been endorsed by former Alderman Amiya Pawar, the only Indian-American ever elected to the Chicago City Council. It is supported by over 120 local businesses and 25 organizations, including Amnesty International and Human Rights Watch Chicago. It should be noted that many Trump supporters from the suburbs have been attacking this resolution and attacking the sponsor of this resolution, Alderman Maria Hadden. Groups like the Republican Hindu Coalition in Carroll Stream, Illinois oppose this resolution. It should be noted that the group brought Steve Bannon, Trump advisor and white supremacist, to Chicago in June 2019 and named him co-chair of the group. Opponents of this resolution have used Chicago as a base to spread hate, bringing together supremacist ideologies. A more detailed resolution has passed in eight other cities, including Seattle, San Francisco, suburban Riverdale, Illinois. Chicago is a sanctuary city that welcomes all regardless of their faith or background. I am proud to be the citizen of the world's oldest democracy, and I'm here to draw your attention to the current deteriorating state of affairs to the country of my birth, the world's oldest democracy, India. Now, I want you to think about how you would feel if you cannot marry the person you love. Yes, this law, one of the laws that has been passed in India in the northern state of Uttar Pradesh, where consenting adult Muslim man and a consenting adult Hindu woman cannot marry, as per the law in this state. Lastly, again, I will conclude with thanking Alderwoman Maria Hadden for sponsoring this resolution. Thank you for being bold enough to bring these human rights violations to the notice of this committee and this great city of Chicago. I conclude with my strong support for Resolution R 2020-583 and urge you to vote yes for this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ahmed, for your comments. Your Honor, the time allotted for the public comment period has expired.
This concludes the public comment period. Ladies and gentlemen, our next item on the agenda is resolutions, as is fitting for Women's History Month. We have two resolutions today honoring two women. An honorary resolution for Dorothy Gators and a congratulatory resolution for Lisa Morrison Butler. Alderman Mitchell, do you have a motion? Alder Mitchell, I think you're muted.
Okay, hold on. Madam President, I move for temporary suspension of the rules with admitted consideration of these two resolutions.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. In the interest of respecting people's time, we will forego the reading of the resolutions in their entirety and instead hear remarks from City Council. The first resolution that we will hear is recognizing the outstanding achievements of Coach Gators. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the council. Just wanted to say some real positive words for a woman that has been a role model on the west side of Chicago for the last 40-plus years. Dorothy Gators is synonymous with success. Dorothy Gators is synonymous with helping others. And again, through her work at Marshall High School, through all the wins that she's accomplished, through all of the trophies that she's accumulated, through all of the All-Americans that she has coached, at the end of the day, she has been one that has worked for the betterment of the young ladies and the young men. She's been the athletic director over for a number of years at Marshall High School. It's befitting that we honor this champion, this giant, in our great city. She is actually the winningest coach, not only in Chicago, not only between boys' and girls' basketball, but for our entire state of Illinois. She's been coaching at Marshall here since 1975 and is part of the fabric of the Garfield Park community. So I thank you, Madam President, for honoring her and the members of this esteemed body for recognizing the work that Coach Gators has done, not just for the west side of Chicago, not even just for our city, but for basketball and for the advancement of women's basketball throughout our nation. She was also a coach of Olympic teams. So again, all of this great work, all of the things that she has done, right here from a little gym on the corner of Adams and Kedzie. So again, one of our treasures here for the city of Chicago. It's befitting that we honor you on today, and thank you for all that you have done. Thank you for what you continue to do and the work that you've put in to help young people throughout our community and throughout our city and state. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Irvin, and the Chair recognizes Alderman Dowell.
Thank you, Madam...
Hey, how you doing?
President, I wanted to be associated with this resolution honoring Dorothy Gators. I don't, I haven't met you, Dorothy, only once, but I know of your beginnings on playing basketball on the west side at the Sears YMCA. And I've heard stories about you from the late, great Pat Hill, who I know was a teammate of yours. I think she was the guard and you were the center forward. I just wanted to acknowledge you as a hero and legend in the city of Chicago, not just on the west side, but also on the south side, and for inspiring so many young girls and women to play this game that we love called basketball. And to acknowledge the achievements of getting one of your players in the league, Kathy Pondexter, who was Pondexter, who was also a member of the Chicago Sky. So I just wanted to be a part of today's celebration of you, and thank you for all that you poured into the young women of Chicago on the west side and the south side. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Dowell. The Chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Madam President, I'm sorry. I too rise to support this resolution. I too rise to support this resolution, especially being a former commando and a student of Coach Gators. Oh, man, back years and years ago. I want to thank you so much for being, for 45 years, a positive role in so many people's lives. I'm actually waiting on you to write a book or see a movie of your success and your struggles, especially being a female in the field. May God continue to bless you and you know where I am if you ever need me. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman Curtis. The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. And being a young man from the west side of Chicago and a former student of Whitney Young High School, you know, if you grew up playing basketball, you knew a women's basketball player, if you were not a Marshall commando, then this woman broke your heart in some way, shape, or fashion throughout the years. And again, being somebody that came from Whitney Young, I have many heartbreaks at the hands of her. But you know, it's a good heartbreak because she has molded so many young women. And I dare say she's the greatest coach in Illinois history. You know, being inducted into the Women's Hall of Fame, Basketball Hall of Fame, for all the work that she's done, all the young lady that she's mentored, all the championships that she's won. And again, like Alderman Irvin said, from the west side of Chicago in a little small gym, I am just so appreciative of the work that she has done in the game of basketball and in mentoring young women. I was listening to a radio program on a radio station a couple of weeks ago, and there were a couple of women players there that were from Marshall. And they spoke so highly of the tough love that they received from Coach Gators. And so, you know, I know that she's been a part of their life and continues to be a part of their life and continues to mentor young women in the game of basketball and in life. And so just wanted to make sure that I was able to honor you while you were still here, give you flowers while you're still here. We're appreciative of the work that you do and hope that you continue for many, many more years. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Scott. The Chair recognizes Alderman King.
Thank you, Madam President. I am honored here to join in and honoring Coach Dorothy Gators. She is definitely an icon. She's a legend, not only in the city, but throughout the country. I don't know if you remember me, Coach Gators, when I was a deputy director of sports for CPS, where I was able to watch you up close. Sports is so important, especially in young people's lives. And you brought so much to so many, especially young, impressionable women. So I just want to thank you for giving your time so freely. You deserve this recognition and so much more. Proud to be here today to honor you for all that you've done. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman King. The Chair recognizes Alderman Talia Pharoah.
Thank you, Madam President. I do rise to be associated with this resolution. Coach Gators, I want to congratulate you on your many decades of accomplishments. But most important, I really want to congratulate you on investment that you've made in the lives of young women. And because of you and because of your investment, many of them have succeeded through life. And that's because of your investment in them. And that investment is not only through coaching and through sports, but it's through your mentorship. And I can only imagine just your experiences that you shared with them as well. So I believe it's befitting for this City Council to recognize you, Coach, on this day and on this month, as we recognize great women across the country. And you certainly stand amongst them. And so I thank you so much for continuing to invest in the young women that reside in this city. Congratulations, Coach. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Talia Pharoah. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President. I do support this resolution. Coach Gators, I also never met you, but I have been following you forever. Believe it or not, I am a huge girls' high school basketball fan. What you have accomplished is amazing. And when some of my colleagues said the greatest coach ever in Illinois history, I certainly concur and agree with that. But I believe one of the most amazing things you've done, to me in fact, is there is no doubt in my mind, for the past 30 or 40 years, you've been recruited by major Division One colleges and it turned them down to stay on the west side and mentor these young women and teach them just to be great athletes and more importantly, individuals in life. So we will, I can't imagine the impact you've had on young women throughout your lengthy career. I am just so impressed with you, all you've done. I am so honored to be here today. I just really want to congratulate you and thank you for staying the course with Chicago Public Schools and your team. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Spazato. The Chair recognizes Chairman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to be associated with this resolution as well. I concur with Alderman Spazato. I have followed Coach Gators' long, beautiful career, knowing that he was, she was going to leave us and be associated with some of the big college basketball teams, but she stayed home. I say that I'm grateful because there was once upon a time, she came out to look at Finger High School, at the little small basketball team that had been developed. It didn't go very far, but she had such encouraging words to give to the young ladies. Like I said, Finger's female basketball team wasn't big, but she made them feel big. So for that, I am ever so grateful for all that you've taught them, for all of the young ladies that have been associated with you. You are truly, truly a gem in this city. Thank you so very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Austin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I definitely, let me stand, stand in support of this resolution for this living legend. I am just so excited on a couple of different fronts as a big fan of high school basketball, coming from the best high school in the state of Illinois in the country, Simeon, where we are the reigning girls' state basketball champs. It is because of Coach Dorothy Gators that I even started watching girls' basketball. I used to think it was so boring and it is how it started happened in a conversation with Coach Hambrick. I think Lamont Bryant was in a room and a couple of other people, and they were talking about some of the greatest coaches before the passing of Mr. Hambrick. And they said, if you want to talk about one of the greatest coaches in Illinois, and they, they, he literally, I heard Coach Hambrick literally say Dorothy Gators. And that blew my mind. And I said, I have to go see what they got going on over at Marshall. And you happened to be in a playoff game, I think it was at DePaul campus. And I came to watch girls' basketball and I was impressed. And from there, just like Alderman Spazato, I became that fan of girls' basketball. That was because of you and I began to support them like I support the boys' team. And from that, these women have grown up, gone on to be not only excellent athlete, but just excellent people in society throughout. And as everyone have stated here, you've been a total asset to the young women in this community. But it's just something that Alderman Chairman Austin touched on. And that is no doubt that you could have gone for the money. You'd be at any college you want to be at, but because of the love that you have for not only Chicago, but our young people, that was more important than money. People, people have to look at that. That's huge. And I thank you because that's a young lady that's not on the street. That's a young lady that's not committing a crime. That's not a young lady that's doing something negative. But you keep putting positive in our community so that Chicago as a whole can be a better city for us. So I definitely support this resolution and I thank you for all that you do for this city. God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I also like to be a supporter of this resolution and congratulate Ms. Gator. God bless you for being a shining light and sharing that light with our young people on the west side, shining that light to get Marshall High School recognized on the west side, shining that light for the west side, shining that light for the city of Chicago, shining that light for the state of Illinois. You have contributed so much to our city, our state, and our young people, and particularly the west side. Just want to say thank you very much. May God continue to bless you. You look great, by the way. And my wife always talk about you. She happened to have gone to Marshall High School some time ago. And she was actually helping to coach the track team back then. And she always rave about you and you were an inspiration for her. So God bless you and congratulations to you.
Thank you, Alderman Burnett. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Emma Mitz.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I too want, would like to be associated with the resolution and congratulate Ms. Gator on the work that she's done in the past and working with you. I just want to make sure that for residents of 37 Watt and for all those who have attended under Ms. Gator's leadership, I know that we appreciate the hard work that's been done throughout the years and we want to thank you for it. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman Mitz. Coach Gators, first of all, let me give credit where credit is due. This resolution was brought forward at the suggestion of Black Caucus Chairman Jason Irvin. So thank you, Chairman Irvin, for teeing up this well-deserved recognition. Coach, I'm gonna, I'm gonna brag on you a little bit here and highlight some of the things that are part of your really storied career. First of all, I didn't recognize you are yourself a graduate of Marshall High School. It really speaks to who you are as a person, that you came back after graduation, after earning a degree at Crane Junior College and then DePaul University. You came back to Marshall High School and had been there and really taken advantage of, I think, the opportunities that the passage of Title IX really presented for girls and particularly basketball and other sports. Marshall High School earned its first of 10. Get that, its first of 10 state titles in 1982. You have produced 18 high school All-Americans, five WNBA players, and one Olympic medalist. You have been recognized by your peers. You coached the 1992 High School All-America Game, the 2000 Junior Olympics, and the 2011 McDonald's All-American Girls' Game. You are a member of the Illinois Coaches Association Hall of Fame, and rightly so, and you've been named Coach of the Year 20 times. And you also were honored by Nike in its film titled Equality and honored with a special colorway for its Blazer Mid 77 shoes in the Marshall colors. And you also are a member of the, you received the order, the award Naismith Memorial Basketball Hall of Fame 2009 Morgan Wooden Lifetime Achievement Award. And that's just to name a few of the things that you have accomplished and what you've given back to the city of Chicago and particularly girls growing up on the west side and having the fortunate opportunity to be under your tutelage. I will tell you, Coach, you know that you and I met in person a couple of years back at a Marshall's game. And of course, I knew the legend of Dorothy Gators. I'm gonna tell you, I was a little bit nervous to approach you and say hello, but as always, you were incredibly gracious in our brief meeting that day. And I don't know who said it, but you're right, she could go out right now today and lead a starting five. So Coach, thank you very much for everything that you've done, a lifetime of service to the young people of the city. Thank you for being such an incredible role model that we all are proud of. And congratulations for receiving this recognition on the part of the city of Chicago. We wish you the best and continue your great work across the city. Thank you, Coach. Next up is a resolution congratulating Lisa Morrison Butler, the former commissioner of the Department of Family Services, the Family and Support Services on the occasion of her retirement from the department. I will go straight to remarks. The Chair recognizes Chairman Harry Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. I really, I can't say enough about Commissioner Morrison Butler. I've been in government a long time and I hold her up as one of the most dedicated people that's ever worked for the city of Chicago. She's a consummate professional. She deals with those in Chicago who need the help the most, those that are homeless, senior citizens, those that are lacking food, youth that need after-school programs. And she has every single day in her time as commissioner has brought a level of intelligence, vigilance, camaraderie, working together with the members of the council to really, I think, move things forward in a positive way. She's not the commissioner of D case, a fun department. She's one that is dealing with challenges every single day, most specifically over this last year in the pandemic. But throughout her time, she's kept positive and she's kept moving forward and helping those, again, in our city who need it the most. I also really value her partnership with the council. It can't be said enough that when the council is working with the administration or working with a department like Family Services, we can get things done together when things are working where they're not apart. And you always had the spirit of cooperation. There were times when members of the council brought things that were unrealistic to her and she did not suffer us and told us it was unrealistic. But she also, when you asked her a question that didn't make sense to us, you knew that she went back to her team and got everyone in a room and said, why are we doing it this way? And if it didn't make sense or it wasn't efficient or it wasn't helping Chicagoans, you knew that she would change it. Her and Alderman Kapelman and housing advocates worked to help house 65 people that were living under viaducts in an innovative way that helped them get housing and get off the streets. And it was something that she did by her sheer will, but by working with us in partnership. So I could go on all day, but the main thing is just want to thank her and thank her for her service to Chicago and really hope that she enjoys her retirement and wishes her health. She's left us a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Osterman. And let me just say, in my zeal and enthusiasm regarding Coach Gators, I neglected to seek a motion to allow her the privilege of speaking to the floor. Is there such a motion regarding Coach Gators?
Don't move, Madam President.
Coach, there's a lot of love in this virtual room for you. And if you'd like, you have the privilege now of addressing the body. So feel free to offer a few words. Coach, I think you're muted. Coach, can you press star six and that'll unmute your phone? We're still having difficulty hearing you. We'll work with you. And pick you up at the end.
I am, I am unmuted, ma'am.
Oh, good, go ahead.
No, that wasn't, that wasn't Coach Gators.
Well, that wasn't the coach.
No.
No. She's still muted, Madam President, so you probably want to go on with.
Coach, we'll figure out a workaround and we'll come back to you at the end of this resolution. Let me go back to the resolution for former Commissioner Lisa Morrison Butler. The chair recognizes Alderman Kappelman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand in support to recognize former Commissioner Lisa Morrison Butler's contribution to Chicago. Lisa, there are many words to describe you, but the one that stands out the most to me is your toughness and grit to get the work done. You're tough because of your commitment to the most vulnerable who often don't have a voice. Your ability to look at all sides of an issue without bias, just the facts, kept you focused on relying on the use of evidence-based best practices. And you and I both share a love for that, as many others. I learned so much from you, and I will always, always be one of your fans. Lisa, my best to you and your next chapter, and I look forward to hearing great things about you again. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Kappelman. The chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. You know, I often have said that Commissioner Butler is one of my, if not my favorite commissioner for all the reasons that my colleagues have spoken. You know, but personally, to be able to pick up the phone and call a Commissioner and that has so many different things that she's working on with, you know, early childcare and the homeless situation and seniors. And, you know, she just has so many vulnerable people under her purview. And, you know, every time I would call her for a question, she would have the answer. Now, she would go back and confirm with many of her staff, but, you know, she has been one of the most knowledgeable people in city government that I have ever dealt with. And it is so appreciated that the compassion and the knowledge and the wherewithal just to get things done. It has just been a joy to collaborate with somebody and to have somebody who is really looking out for people who need looking out for. And that has been Lisa Morrison Butler. And she has huge shoes that are going to need to be filled because she has done the work each and every day. And I, again, appreciate the work that we've done together. I appreciate you as a person, and you will be sorely missed. God bless you, and I hope you enjoy your retirement. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Scott. The chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. I think at the last council, because I wasn't sure if we were going to be able to have a resolution for her. I spoke then, and even now it is setting in. As Michael Scott has said, just one of the most knowledgeable, most engaged, I have to be David, no punk person who will always stand for what she believed in and fight for what she felt was right. And when she did that, it made you more confident to vote on something or if you were in favor of it. But most times, she laid it out for you, you were in favor of it. Because the thing is, you found out she also had a compassionate heart and wanted to do the right things for what DFSS really deal with. And that's mostly all the time, the least of those. And so you think you knew, but she really knew. And she would cause at least me to go back and really do my homework considerably and make the right decisions for our residents. And guess what? Most times, she was right, if not ninety-nine percent, ninety definitely. And so one thing Reverend Evans always said, "It's good to leave when people still want you." It's one thing to leave when people are pushing you out the door. In this case, she's leaving when we still want her. And that's the testament for the person that she is. And her service, her friendship, and her care, not only for the city, but for just to me personally, will hopefully always remain. And I just thank you for the service that you've provided. This Chicago is undoubtedly a better city because she served in it. And I thank you so much for this resolution, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Madam President. Commissioner, when I first learned of your decision to retire, you know, I called you with a broken heart. You know, again, I'm like Alderman Moore, we don't want to see you leave. I watched over the years while I saw where you poured everything that you had into someone else's life to make their life even better. I don't know who's gonna come up next, but they definitely have big shoes to fill. We all gonna miss you, and God bless you very, very much. Job well done and best wishes. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Curtis. The chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Also rising in support of this resolution. Commissioner, we're gonna miss you. Appreciate all of your work in our ward and throughout the city of Chicago. One of the biggest things that stand with me is when we built the facility over at Salvation Army, helping homeless families to get off the floor, have their own private areas with their kids instead of being on the gym floor and surrounded by a whole bunch of people with mats. I just want to say, God bless you for the things that you have done. I know it hasn't always been easy with us because we're so demanding for our ward and we want so many things. You never were afraid to deal with giving us the answers to our questions, right? If there was challenges and we had questions, you would come right to us and tell us why and what the reasons were. So we appreciate that candor. We appreciate all of the hard work that you've done with this COVID situation, with getting people into hotels and other facilities that were homeless who wanted to get into places. Just want to say, God is gonna bless you for the things that you have done to help so many people who need housing in the city of Chicago. And also, we appreciate everything you've done with helping our young people to have early childhood education. So God bless you. We wish you well. Now you can go back to corporate America where you were before and probably get your salary back that you lost when you came to the city of Chicago. Have a good time. God bless you and enjoy the rest of your life. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Burnett. The chair recognizes Alderman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioner, I want to thank you too. I want to really help this out. You came out into the war. I think we were doing an event. And we had a homeless person who came up, a young person. I was talking, didn't have a place to go, no food to eat, and he took time out. And this is about instinct, where you just do the right thing and do what you're supposed to do. So we were able to assist a young man. Not only that, in the winter months, helping provide, mother was sleeping in a car with the children, didn't have a place to go. We could call and your staff, and you all would jump right on those issues. So we have a department that's responsible, that you can pick the phone up and call them in crisis, and they respond. It's a great access to our neighborhood and our community, to the city. So we really appreciate you. I want to wish you a congratulation on behalf of 37th Ward, on your retirement. And look forward to seeing you in another area of work somewhere, somehow, because once it's in you, it just don't go away. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman Mitz. The chair recognizes Alderwoman King.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Butler, wow. I too would like to support this resolution honoring you, Commissioner. You will definitely be missed. I think my colleagues have said it all, but what I really appreciate about you is your dedication, your passion, your expertise, and especially your management skills. Boy, I think people take that for granted. But it is one thing to be smart and talented yourself, but it's a whole nother thing to manage a team of people who are also very effective and passionate. And I believe you probably manage the most in this city and did it so well and so effortlessly. So I just wish you good health and happiness. You will be sorely missed, but stay in touch. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderwoman King. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President, and good afternoon, yes, good morning, colleagues. I too rise in support of this resolution. Commissioner, I remember when we voted to approve you in this role. It was one of the best decisions we ever made. We have worked together in my ward and other communities on good things and bad things, but always meeting people where they are. I appreciate that. I appreciate your willingness to hold us to the task as we held you to the task given to you. I know that you are one of the unsung heroes of this city's government since 2015. And you will be sorely missed. I appreciate knowing you. I look forward to seeing your future. And though everyone says you're retiring, I know nobody ever truly retires from city government. And at some appropriate time, I look forward to your return in whatever fashion you choose. I wish you all the best with you and your family, and thank you for everything you've done on behalf of the residents of the 15th Ward. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. The chair recognizes Alderman Cargenes.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say a thank you to the Commissioner. What a phenomenal professional, to be honest. I was impressed and impressed with her many meetings. Had control of the conversation, very knowledgeable, and just took command of all the issues that was in front of her. Wasn't an easy task, mind you. This is a tough city in her role. And I just want to say thank you from my community that received her professionalism. So thank you again.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also would like to commend your professionalism, Commissioner Butler, in managing your department. I know that you would be the first one to recognize you cannot run an efficient and effective department without having a good team in place that support your leadership. But I also do remember in my dealings with you how straightforward you are and how accurate you are when you are responding to questions that we may ask of you. And I do remember some years ago when we have the Hurricane Maria in Puerto Rico and how you, how effective your department worked with the, at the welcoming center in Humboldt Park, welcoming almost three, thirty-five hundred Puerto Ricans that came from the island seeking refuge here in Chicago. How effective your department handled those, that welcoming every single day for almost four months in a row, and how engaged you were. And I'm so glad also that you had one of your deputies, Deputy Commissioner Alisa Rodriguez, that you designated to be on-site, assisting and facilitating the welcoming initiative. And she was there every single day, making sure that all and every Puerto Rican and family that would walk through Humboldt Park on the day that they would come, that they would get the services that they needed walking out of the center. So thank you for your service. And on behalf of the Puerto Rican community, I will be forever grateful to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Maldonado. The chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. Commissioner, thank you for your service. I know we've had some trying times here over on the West Side around issues of homelessness. And I really want to thank you for the work that you and your team have done to help improve the quality of life, not only for the residents, the homeless individuals, but also for the community around, especially around the Franciscan House, as well as Safe Haven. And again, the work that you've just done on a larger scale, One Summer Chicago, helping get so many young people employed in our city. Sometimes people refer to, you know, Human Services in Ten South Kezzi as a place of last resort. And I don't think you ever viewed it as the place of last resort, but a place of first response for people who are in crises. And so again, we thank you for the work that you have done to make our city a better place, especially the residents of the West Side of Chicago and the Garfield Park community. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. The chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand in support of this resolution. Commissioner, I want to sincerely thank you for your efforts to help homeless when we experience issues revolving around a difficult challenge. As homelessness presents, I knew I could come Friday evening around 10:00 PM, well after office hours, and you got right back to me. And you helped us much services home and in our ward. We were able to temporarily find him a hotel to sleep in for some. I'm very.
Thank you, Alderman Gardner. The chair recognizes Alderman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. Everything's been said, Commissioner. I think that you leaving us is a tremendous loss for the city of Chicago. I just wish you well in your next endeavors. I thank you for all of the service that you've provided the city over the years and your compassion for the least of us, for those that are struggling, for people who sometimes don't have a place to go. Thank you so much for always being fair, for saying what's on your mind straight and being able to work with everyone within the council. You will be missed, but I know that you're going on to bigger and better things. So congratulations on your retirement from the city, and God bless you in all that you do. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. Lisa, you and I have had some time to talk. As you know, when you first told me that you felt like it was time for you to move on, I expressed my sadness, but also my understanding of your need to take care of yourself and take care of your family. There are many great tributes that you've heard today. Six years as a Commissioner of one of the most challenging, complicated, but absolutely essential, necessary departments is a record of accomplishment in and of itself. But what I'll also say is there are a number of things that I think are your legacy that I want to highlight a few of them. First of all, you put together and have led a great and strong team. The department is strong and viable and will continue to be able to rise up and meet the challenges that this moment really demands across our city. The other thing I want to highlight are two things that are important, I think, for our young people. At a time when a lot of cities, because of the pandemic, shut down their summer programs, we did not. And we did not because of your leadership. Chicago still employed thousands of young people in the summer of 2020 because that was the right thing to do, and you guided us through those challenging times. So I will personally be forever grateful. And another part of your legacy that will live on is the convening of the first ever U Services Corps for the summer and the fall, and again, in the summer of 2021. Those are just two of many, many points that a legacy that you've created that will continue on in your stead because as a true sign of leadership, you built a team and a department for the long term and not just depended upon you being there. As others have said, you will absolutely be greatly missed, but I really stand in support of this resolution. And for me personally, thank you again and again for the tremendous leadership that you've shown in your partnership with me as a new mayor, a first-time mayor, in weathering a once-in-a-lifetime series of storms that the DFSS was right in the center of calming, being there, supporting our residents. Thank you on behalf of a grateful city that may not know your name, but have certainly felt your warm touch. So thank you, Commissioner, and we wish you the best in your endeavors. Hug your family, love your husband, love your daughters, love your sister, and carry on. When I think of you, I think of warrior. Thank you. Motion to give Commissioner Butler the privilege of the floor to speak to the body.
I'll move by Alderman David Moore.
Commissioner, the floor is yours. Good morning or good afternoon, everyone, and thank you so much for this honor. Thank you, Mayor Lightfoot. Thank you to all of the members of the City Council. The partnership with this body is one of the things that I most credit to the success that we were able to have at DFSS and one of the things that I most prize personally. Also, congratulations to Coach Gators, who is truly a legend. It's just an honor to have my resolution fall on the same day as hers. I have to tell you all, yesterday would have been my father's 93rd birthday, and my father was a career Army officer, and we were a military family. And it was because my mom and dad felt so strongly about service that I accepted this position in 2015. Shortly after joining, I lost both my mom and my dad. And I know that they would be so proud today. This would be so meaningful for them. So to me, what was meaningful was the support and the camaraderie that we had while I was there. But I have to thank you all. I know things like this are routine matters for the council, but this will mean an awful lot to my children and my family, and it would have meant so much to my mom and dad. The partnership that we had with this body, the partnership that we have with the mayor's office, the partnership that we have with the delegate agencies that we fund, those are the things that made what we were able to do possible. I so appreciate those of you that recognize the power and might of the team at DFSS. They are amazing, and it was an honor to lead them, and I wish them all the best. They are a great team and right now being led by interim Commissioner Brandy Canazi, and they're still doing great things. We were pleased to be able to turn toward being an outcomes and data-driven organization. And in that work, I think that with your support, we're doing some great things. So thank you guys so much. I am not retiring. I'm resigning from DFSS, and because of that, I am actually today in Florida with my sister where she's undergoing treatment. And that kind of flexibility is something that is really important to me and my family right now. So thank you guys so much. Miss you more than you can know and so appreciate all the great things we were able to do together. Thank you, Mayor Lightfoot.
Alan David was your favorite, Alderman.
Absolutely. I think we now have solved the technology challenges. Coach Gators, would you like to address the body?
Good morning. Can anyone hear?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, great. Want to make sure that I'm being heard. So very briefly, I'd like to first thank the mayor for allowing this opportunity to take place, and I'd like to congratulate her on the job that she's done for the city of Chicago during some very difficult times. For the kind words and just awesome, for those who spoke and those who did not, I appreciate everything that I've been able to do on behalf of the young ladies at Marshall Heights, too. And I appreciate even more the recognition that I'm receiving today. On behalf of my family, of my assistant coaches, and my players who work so, so very hard and just been a wonderful group for me to have been associated with, I appreciate this honor more than you'll ever know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Coach. Alderman Mitchell, is there a motion for passage of the resolutions?
Madam President, I move passage of these two resolutions in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell, is there a motion to return to the regular order of business?
I now move we return to the regular order of business.
All right, hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, are communications. Madam Clerk.
A series of communications from our Honorable the Mayor to the Honorable the City Council of the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, at request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing execution of intergovernmental agreements. The Chicago Board of Education regarding the expenditure of TIP funds for school improvements. Your favorable consideration of these ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at request of the Budget Director, I transmit here with a Fund 925 Amendment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing classic fee tax status for various properties. Your favorable consideration of these ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property in a associated redevelopment agreement with the South, or Chicago Southwest Development Corporation. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at request of Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance amending the Municipal Code of Chicago regarding affordable requirements. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at request of Commissioner of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection, I transmit here with a resolution approving a transfer of ownership in RCN Cable TV of Chicago Incorporated. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Ladies and gentlemen, at request of Commissioner of Transportation, I transmit here with an ordinance amending the Municipal Code regarding traditional parades. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, at request of Commissioner of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection and the Director of Office and Labor Standards, I transmit here with an ordinance prohibiting vaccination-related retaliation. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Workforce Development. Ladies and gentlemen, at request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance amending the Municipal Code regarding the Kenzie Corridor Overlay District. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, at request of Commissioner of Buildings, I transmit here with an ordinance amending the Municipal Code regarding a problem building and buildings and landlords list. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, at request of Commissioners of Building and Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance amending the Municipal Code of Chicago regarding additional dwelling units, ADUs. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to the Board of Health. Your favorable considerations or appointments will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Brooke Flanagan as a member of the Advisory Council on Cultural Affairs and Special Events for a term effective immediately and expiring October 5, 2022, to complete the unexpired term of David Schmidt, who has resigned. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Erica E. Rodriguez to the member of the Illinois International Port District Board for a term effective immediately and expiring June 1, 2025, to succeed Terrence P. Fitzmorris, whose term has expired. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Transportation in Public Way. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. I C. Clerk Anna Blunt here by inform the City Council, the following documents were filed in my office relating to the respective subjects designated as follows. Second Order Number 2021-2, addressing procurement, equity, and transparency. Inspector General's Audit Report concerning the Department of Water Management Overtime Monitoring. I C. Clerk Blunt also informed the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on February 26, 2020, and which were required by statute to be published in a book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers or published in pamphlet form on March 24, 2021, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of Proceedings of the Council of the City of Chicago. I C. Clerk Blunt also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications report requiring City Council action. Zoning reclassifications of particular areas which are referred to Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Claims against the City of Chicago which refer to Committee on Finance. Your Honor, that concludes mayoral and clerks' communications. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, are the committee reports. We'll start with the Committee on Finance. Chairman Wegas back.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met on March 22, 2021. Item number one is a communication authorizing a proposed amendment to Municipal Code Section 2-32-085 by modifying charitable organizations eligible for contributions from the voluntary employee payroll deduction program. This item was approved by the committee by voice vote, and I think Alderman O'Shea might have wanted to speak to this item, but if no one does wish to speak on the matter, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee by roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada.
Aye.
Alderman Laspada is an aye. Alderman Hopkins.
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins is an aye. Alderman Dow.
Aye.
Alderman Dow is an aye. Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman King is an aye. Alderman Harrison.
Aye.
Alderman Harrison is an aye. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer is an aye. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell is an aye. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Harris is an aye. Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Beal is an aye. Alderman Zalowski-Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Zalowski-Garza is an aye. Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson is an aye. Alderman Cardenas.
Aye.
Alderman Cardenas is an aye. Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn is an aye. Alderman Burke. Alderman Burke.
Alderman Burke, you are muted. Can you unmute yourself?
Aye.
Alderman Burke is an aye. Alderman Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Lopez is an aye. Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman is an aye. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Moore is an aye. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is an aye. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea is an aye. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Taylor is an aye. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez is an aye. Alderman Tabarez.
Aye.
Alderman Tabarez is an aye. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott is an aye. Alderman Tito Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Tito Lopez is an aye. Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado is an aye. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett is an aye. Alderman Irvin.
Aye.
Alderman Irvin is an aye. Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro is an aye. Alderman Raboyas.
Aye.
Raboyas is an aye. Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona is an aye. Alderman Waxisback.
Aye.
Alderman Waxisback is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is an aye. Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Austin is an aye. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is an aye. Alderman Vegas.
Aye.
Alderman Vegas is an aye. Alderman Metz.
Aye.
Alderman Metz is an aye. Alderman Spazato.
Nick Spazato is an aye.
Alderman Spazato is an aye. Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent is an aye. Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez is an aye. Alderman Napolitano.
Aye.
Alderman Napolitano is an aye. Alderman Riley. Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Riley is an aye. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Smith is an aye. Alderman Tunny.
Aye.
Alderman Tunny is an aye. Alderman Gardner.
Aye.
Alderman Gardner is an aye. Alderman Capelman.
Aye.
Alderman Capelman is an aye. Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Martin is an aye. Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman is an aye. Alderman Hadden.
Aye.
Alderman Hadden is an aye. Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein is an aye. Peter?
Your Honor, there are 50 ayes, no nays.
The matter passes, and Madam Clerk, just for purposes of clarifying the record, please note Alderman O'Shea's attendance in this meeting.
Got it. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
I move to reconsider that first vote of the Committee on Finance.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
No.
The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Wegas back. Back to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number two is a communication authorizing a proposed amendment to Municipal Code Chapter 2-44 by adding new subsection 2-44-135, imposing a build-and-demolition surcharge tax pilot program until April 1, 2022 in the Pilsen and 606 Tidel neighborhoods. The item was approved by the committee by roll call vote. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage by the first most favored roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exception of Alderman Spazato voting no. And actually, Madam President, I think we had Alderman Ramirez Rosa that wished to speak, but had some other exceptions on this item.
Why don't I call on the members who raised their hand to speak, and then you can speak further. The Chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I want to thank you and your administration for working so diligently with myself, Alderman Laspada, Alderman Maldonado, Alderman Byron Sitchelopis. The Alderman, where this ordinance will go into effect, this is an extremely reasonable policy to protect naturally occurring affordable housing in our Chicago neighborhoods that are seeing record-high displacement in this moment. The city of Chicago and our Affordable Housing Plan has recognized naturally occurring affordable housing as one of the key things that is going to continue to keep Chicagoans in their homes, that's going to continue to keep our population where it needs to be, that's going to provide customers for our small businesses, that's going to provide students for our schools. Unfortunately, in communities like Pilsen, portions of Logan Square, and Hermosa, we have lost a record number of naturally occurring affordable housing units. In areas that I represent, we lost 1,500 units over the last several years. As one example, to build 100 units of affordable housing in Logan Square, we as a city had to come together to provide around $40 million in subsidy. So do the math. So do the math. Replacing those 1,500 units of affordable housing is going to be extremely cost prohibitive to the City of Chicago. And so we have to take reasonable steps to protect those units, to make sure that we are helping to preserve that naturally occurring affordable housing, and recognizing that there's an impact when we demolish these buildings that are serving an important purpose in our community. So I'm proud to support this demolition surcharge. This is a policy that our community has been working towards for many, many years. Logan Square Neighborhood Association first proposed this in 2016 and 2017, when the data and the numbers started coming out from the DePaul Institute for Housing Studies. They initially put forward a surcharge which was hundreds of thousands of dollars, but we worked together and we compromised, and this $15,000 surcharge is reasonable. If developers opt to demolish, you know, a two or three flat, they'll pay the fee, and that fee will go to the Chicago Community Land Trust to secure and build affordable housing in the area. Should they not choose to demolish the building, they can rehabilitate the building, they can continue to invest in our communities, but we just want to recognize that there is an impact when we lose these naturally occurring affordable housing units to demolition and deconversion. There's not just the impact on affordable housing, but there's also the impact on our environment. Demolition contributes to air pollution, it also contributes to climate change. And so I just want to thank you again. I want to thank the Law Department. They did a lot of work on this to make sure that this was a legal, defensible argument. There are experts on this matter. They've done their research. And so this is, this is a good public policy, and I support all of our colleagues, the majority of this council that we've spoken to, who have said that they will support this important policy for the communities and for the Aldermen who want to see it enacted in their neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Ramirez Rosa. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President, and again, good morning, colleagues. I rise in opposition to this ordinance, and I first want to say I understand my colleagues' concerns about fighting gentrification, but in many of those neighborhoods, the gentrification has already happened. I oppose this because we're not looking at where gentrification could happen. We're not looking at those other communities where we are on the cusp of seeing people being pushed out. We're trying to correct something that has already transpired. I also oppose this because what we are doing, even though this is a compromise, and I give credit to my colleagues, we heard during committee state that they went from a six-figure fee to a five-figure fee as a compromise. What we are doing is not just impacting developers, we are impacting and quite literally stealing the equity from those families that stayed in these communities, that were part of Logan Square when it was not the hip place to be, that were in Pilsen when there were more gangbangers on a corner than there were tours and tour buses. Those individuals are being robbed of the equity should they choose to now use their vehicle for personal wealth, their property, to generate funds for their family, to create generational wealth for their future. That is wrong. There's no assistance or carve out to protect those individuals. The conversation continues to revolve around developers as though those are the only individuals that build in these communities. We know there are people in upscale and rising communities that still own, that still build, and still want to stay. We know that there are individuals who want to cash out after being in a community for 30 years, and now they're going to be penalized for that. $15,000, $5,000 per unit on four or more unit buildings, that is an exorbitant loss that we are forcing onto people. We can and must do better, and not just assume that we can continue to create policy that takes and forces people to do things with the property they rightfully own, simply because we have no policy in place as a council or as a city to address legitimately how to create affordable housing. You want to create affordable housing in our city? You want to build in neighborhoods? Remove the barriers, the structural governmental barriers that cause these price points to increase. Find ways for our partners to do it so it doesn't cost $300,000 to create a unit of affordability in a neighborhood. Then we will find a sustainable way to create affordable housing. Then we won't have to continue to try and steal people's equity from their homes after being in there for decades. That is the right way to go. I applaud the effort. I applaud the compromise, but we could do better. We should do better, and we should do this on a citywide scale because that's the right way to do things. This pilot, while trying to create, create the past, sets us up on a dangerous precedent for the future, and I urge my colleagues to vote no on this matter. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be very brief. I too wanted to record as being voted no on this issue. I don't think this issue is going to pass legal mustard. I don't believe that you can have a carve out in one part of the city and raise fines, raise fines and fees, or permit fees in just certain areas. So therefore, I will encourage the rest of my colleagues to vote no because I just don't think this will support, you know, we just won't have legal grounds to stand on this particular issue. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Beal. The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you so much. I'm very proud to stand in support of this legislation, after standing in support of it for the last five years since leaders and advocates in the Logan Square community began fighting for this. I remember four years ago, standing with them underneath a viaduct of the 606 as we marked the one-year anniversary of similar legislation being introduced. I remember marching with them three years ago as we passed the second anniversary of this legislation being introduced. Every year of that time, we watched as more and more two, three, six-flat housing was being demolished in this area. And I'm sad on one level that it took us as long to get to this moment, but I'm incredibly grateful that we did get here. With the collaboration of the administration, with months and months of meeting with law, Department of Housing, DPD, the Buildings Department, we've worked tirelessly to make sure not only that this will pass legal mustard, but that it will be effective in doing what we hope it will do, which is making sure when a two and three flat is sold, that it is sold as a two and three flat to someone who hopefully has the wherewithal and interest and from our city the incentives for maintaining that as relatively affordable housing in our community. There's been a lot of work done. There's a lot of justifications for this work to continue, and we will study the effectiveness of this ordinance over the last, next year or so. But I strongly urge favorable consideration of this legislation by the council. It's been a long time coming, and there is still so much that can be preserved in terms of the integrity and the diversity of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Laspada. The Chair recognizes Alderman Byron Sichulopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to clarify the thing that in, in committee, there was a good conversation, but for those colleagues who were not able to attend, this is a very simple issue. We have seen the, the loss of not only a population, we have lost density in communities like Pilsen, Logan Square, and around the 606. When we see developers coming in on a free-for-all, buying property left and right cash, when we have seen families and long-term homeowners barely making ends meet, we know who are benefiting, but if we don't do anything about it, we know that a lot of these developers come, tear down homes, and build mansions instead of the three flats or two flats that we have in our communities. It's a very simple matter of economics. If we lose density on top of the naturally occurring affordable housing that is lost when families lose their homes, we're losing, not only we have displaced thousands of residents, especially in our black and brown communities, but also we're allowing developers to do as they please in our communities affecting our social fabric. We need to make sure that we continue to create density in affordable housing. We need to make sure that we protect or, or small homeowners, as some of my colleagues mentioned, but you're not going to protect them by protecting developers from paying a small fees like, like this one. I, I think that that, that is a disingenuous claim. I also think that this is definitely going to be lawful. We have precedent. We have Evanston as a neighbor, not, not only precedent nationally, but this precedent next door. And finally, to my colleagues who want to do more to protect the wealth, their generational wealth, and the small homeowners and long-term homeowners, I encourage you to please work with the assessor's office, with the local commissioners, to talk about property taxes who are really hurting our small bit, or our small homeowners, to create incentives so those who keep the rents affordable, so that we don't displace most, more tenants and homeowners from our neighborhoods. And finally, to create more protections and help to increase of affordable housing through innovative techniques or, and policies like the cooperatives that we have in Pilsen, and also create more funding for repairs for those small homeowners who are strapped right now with liquidity. Those are some things, and then there's keep money and other things that we can be doing, and we're really generous about helping the small homeowners to stay in our communities and helping our, our, our black and brown communities who are hurting right now. Let's not, let's not continue to help those developers who will not have any issue paying these small fees. If anything, I'm sure they're already thinking how they're going to bypass this. This is the step in the right direction, and I urge my colleagues, every community group, and every Alderman in this pilot is in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sichulopez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I want to commend our colleagues, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, Alderman Sichulopez, Alderman Laspada, and Alderman Maldonado, really for being leaders in establishing this pilot. As someone who has never lived up until like the latest coach house that I rent from, has never lived in anything but a two or three flat, losing that housing stock, especially in a time when people haven't been able to pay rent, where people need more options and density, it, it just, it makes absolute sense to have something like this that incentivizes having more of that density. And we really need to be concerned about the fact that there is a profit motive to those who want to demolish these to create million-dollar, single-family homes or other things. I would say, you know, for, for the 40th ward in our neck of the woods, yeah, there, there are many parts of it that have been gentrified, and so it's even more important that we retain the density and not further lose those two and three flats, which are historically Chicagoan and something we need to retain. I am also slightly envious of our colleagues for being able to establish that pilot, and definitely look forward to working on something similar for our part of town, as I think it's the area to be. And the thing is that those developers that become with those market rate, new properties into the ward, they're not, they are not catering to the Latino community that they are displacing. They're catering to white owners who are fairly wealthy to come and invade our communities and the, the displaced, the people of color, brown people that remain living here. This is sad to watch this every, every year. The thousands of families are being displaced. And it's, it's, it's maybe nice to speak about from ignorance, not experiencing what we have, what we are experiencing around the 606, and I know how my friends around the Pilsen area are experiencing as well. This is a moral issue. I think that this fee should be much higher, like we originally proposed, that they were much, much higher, because it's not the purpose to really slow down the conversions or the demolitions. The purpose behind all this, we hope, is to stop, stop gentrification, stop development in ra, in areas, and stop displacing us. That is exactly what we want, and I, but this is just going to be just $15,000 each unit for demolition. A developer is going to make that up in a gentrifying area on any new development that they're going to build, and the selling owner, then they're going to suffer because they're not going to lose the ability to sell the property at market rate. That's not going to happen. But I hope that this will be a break for those developers, market rate, that say, oh, I don't want to go there because we're not welcome there. Yes, we're not welcoming you, and I hope they just stay away from our gentrifying communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Maldonado. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to express my support for this ordinance, and, and I want to commend my colleagues for putting it forward. I think this is a great start to find collective solutions to some of the, of the issues that we face, particularly with displacement, particularly with gentrification in our communities. And I just want to make sure that we remember this is a pilot, and pilots are tested in small areas usually, right, and then we can expand them. So I am really looking forward to the success of this pilot and, and, and looking to expand it across the city, and I'm, I am inviting all my colleagues to vote yes on it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez. Chairman Wegas back. Back to you. Chairman, you need to unmute yourself.
Yes, that would be helpful. Thank you. Madam President, as I was stating, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report, the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider. With the, with...
Let him finish, please.
I had the exception of Alderman Spisato, Lopez, Beal, and Riley, and Napolitano. However, because there were other people that spoke against it, I feel we should call for a roll call vote, and I heard my colleagues call for the same.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada.
Aye.
Alderman Laspada is an aye. Alderman Hopkins.
No.
Alderman Hopkins is a no. Alderman Dow.
No.
Alderman Dow is a no. Alderman King. Alderman King. Alderman Harrison.
Aye.
Alderman Harrison is an aye. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer is an aye. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Harris is an aye. Alderman Beal.
Oh.
Alderman Beal is a no. Alderman Zelaski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Zelaski Garza is an aye. Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson is an aye.
Alderman King is an aye.
Alderman King is an aye. Alderman Cardness.
Aye.
Alderman Cardness is an aye. Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn is an aye. Alderman Burke.
Oh.
Alderman Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman is an aye. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Moore is an aye. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is an aye. Alderman O'Shea.
No.
Alderman O'Shea is a no. Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor is an aye. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez.
Absolutely, yes.
Alderman Rodriguez is an aye. Alderman Tabarez.
Aye.
Tabarez is an aye. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott is an aye. Alderman Tito Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tito Lopez is an aye. Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado is an aye. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett is an aye. Alderman Urban.
Aye.
Aye. Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro is an aye. Alderman Raboyas.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyas is an aye. Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona is an aye. Alderman Wagaspack.
Aye.
Alderman Wagaspack is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Yes, please.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is an aye. Alderman Austin.
No.
Alderman Austin is a no. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is an aye. Alderman Vegas.
Aye.
Alderman Vegas is an aye. Alderman Metz. Alderman Metz. Alderman Spisato.
Nick Spisato is a no.
Alderman Spisato is a no. Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent is an aye. Alderman Vasquez.
Hell, yes.
Alderman Vasquez is an aye. Alderman Napolitano.
Nope.
Alderman Napolitano is a no. Alderman Riley.
No.
Alderman Riley is a no. Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Smith is a, 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 aye. Alderman Tunny.
No.
Alderman Tony is a no. Alderman Gardner.
No.
Alderman Gardner is a no. Alderman Capelman.
Aye.
Alderman Capelman is an aye. Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Martin is an aye. Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman is an aye. Alderman Hadden.
Aye.
Alderman Hadden is an aye. Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein is an aye. Peter?
Alderman Mitchell is a aye.
Alderman Mitchell is an aye. Anyone else that I missed?
Arizona.
Anyone else I missed?
It's.
Okay. Peter?
Your Honor, there are 37 yeas, 12 nays.
The matter passes. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to reconsider that last vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Wegasback.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number three is a communication approving the designation of the 2021 municipal depositories for the City of Chicago. I want to point out that we had a very robust and substantive discussion with some good solutions that came out of this discussion. I want to thank the Comptroller of Reshmi Soni for her work in this issue, bringing out the RFP in an open and flexible way and for allowing Alderman to have such good input on this item. So if the item was approved by a committee by roll call vote, and if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by a roll call vote as well.
Alderman Burke, I see your hand up. Do you wish to speak on this matter?
No, I was trying to be recognized on the other one. Excuse me, Your Honor.
All right, apologies. There's a motion for passage by the first most favorable roll call vote and the associated motion for reconsideration.
Actually. Madam President, I made a motion for a roll call vote.
All right. Madam Clerk.
Right, another roll call. Alderman Laspata.
Madam President.
I'm sorry, Madam President.
The chair recognizes Alderman Thompson.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was having some communication. Is this the depository matter that we're talking about?
That's correct.
Okay. For the record, I ruled 14 out of 110 caution by the uncle who was at Wells Fargo, who was added to that list. I voted abstaining in committee, and I'd like to be reported as abstaining here.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Laspata.
Aye.
Alderman Laspata is an aye. Alderman Hopkins.
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins is an aye. Alderman Dow.
Aye.
Alderman Dow is an aye. Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman King is an aye. Alderman Harrison.
Aye.
Alderman Harrison is an aye. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer is an aye. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell is an aye. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Harris is an aye. Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Beal is an aye. Alderman Zlasky Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Zlasky Garza is an aye. Alderman Thompson.
Abstaining under Rule 14.
Alderman Thompson is a Rule 14. Alderman Cardness. Alderman Cardness. Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn is an aye. Alderman Burke.
Aye.
Alderman Burke is an aye.
Alderman Carden is an aye. Sorry.
Alderman Cardness is an aye. Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman is an aye. Alderman Moore.
Alderman Moore is a aye.
Alderman Moore is an aye. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is an aye. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea is an aye. Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor is an aye. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez is an aye. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Tabarez. Yes. Okay. Sorry, I didn't hear you. Alderman Tabarez say yes. An aye. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott is an aye. Alderman Sichu Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Sichu Lopez is an aye. Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado is an aye. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett is an aye. Alderman Urban.
Aye.
Burnett is an aye. Alderman Talaferro.
Aye.
Alderman Talaferro is an aye. Alderman Navoyas.
Aye.
Alderman Navoyas is an aye. Alderman Cardona.
Aye. Aye.
Alderman Wagaspack is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is an aye. Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Austin is an aye. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is an aye. Alderman Vegas.
Aye.
Alderman Vegas is an aye. Alderman Metz. Alderman Metz. Alderman Metz is an aye. Alderman Spazato.
Next Spazato is a yes.
Alderman Spazato is an aye. Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent is an aye. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez is an aye. Alderman Napolitano.
Aye.
Alderman Napolitano is an aye. Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Riley is an aye. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Smith is an aye. Alderman Tony.
Aye.
Alderman Tony is an aye. Alderman Gardner.
Aye.
Alderman Gardner is an aye. Alderman Capelman.
Aye.
Alderman Capelman is an aye. Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Martin is an aye. Alderman Osterman.
No.
Alderman Osterman is a no. Alderman Hadden.
Aye.
Alderman Hadden is an aye. Alderman Silverstein. Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein is an aye.
Aye.
Did I miss anyone? Anyone? Last chance. All right, Peter?
There are 47 yeas, 2 nays.
The matter passes. Chairman Harris on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I believe that we reconsider this item.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Wegasback.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number four is a communication authorizing the City of Chicago to enter into and execute the restructuring of mortgage note and federal home, H-O-M-E, investment partnership program from original borrower, CNF 89th and Loomis Joint Venture, to the new owner, Brainerd Senior LLC, for property located at 8901 to 8925 South Loomis Avenue, to preserve affordable senior housing. This project is located in the 21st Ward. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Item number five is a communication authorizing the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the use of tax increment financing, or TIF funds, in the amount of $650,000 for certain improvements and renovations to Hermosa Park, located at 2240 North Kilborn Avenue in the 36th Ward. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number six is a communication authorizing the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the use of tax increment financing funds in the amount of $250,000 for certain improvements and construction at Dursow Park, located at 421 West Locust Street in the 27th Ward. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote, and if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number seven is a communication authorizing the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the use of tax increment financing funds in the amount of $500,000 for certain improvements and construction at Clark Park, located at 4615 West Jackson Boulevard in the 28th Ward. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Item number eight is a communication authorizing the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the use of tax increment financing funds in the amount of $1.5 million for certain improvements and construction at Fosco Park, located at 1313 South Troop Street, located in the 25th Ward. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number nine is a communication authorizing the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the use of tax increment financing funds in the amount of $175,000 for certain improvements and construction at Gross Park, located at 2708 West Lawrence Avenue, located in the 40th Ward. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Item number 10 is a communication authorizing the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the use of tax increment financing funds in the amount of $1 million for certain improvements and construction at Ridge Park, located at 1817 West 96th Street in the 19th Ward. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote, and if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 11 is a communication authorizing the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the use of tax increment financing funds in the amount of $400,000 for certain improvements and construction at Roosevelt Park, located at 62 West Roosevelt Road in the 4th Ward. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Item number 12 is a communication authorizing the City of Chicago authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the use of tax increment financing funds in the amount of $250,000 for certain improvements and construction at Wentworth Gardens Park, located at 3770 South Wentworth Avenue, located in the 3rd Ward. This item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Item number 13 is a communication authorizing the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the use of tax increment financing funds in the amount of $1.5 million for certain improvements and construction at Big Marsh Park. This is located at 11555 South Stony Island Avenue, located in the 10th Ward. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Item number 14 is a communication authorizing the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the use of tax increment financing funds in the amount of $175,000 for certain improvements at Bronco Billy Park, located at 4437 North Magnolia Avenue, located in the 46th Ward. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. And folks, can I just remind you to mute yourself when you are not speaking? Thank you. Please proceed, Chairman.
Yes. Item number 15 is a communication authorizing the City of Chicago authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the use of tax increment financing funds in the amount of $125,000 for certain improvements at Chase Park, located at 4701 North Astron Avenue, located in the 47th Ward. This item was approved by our committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 16 is a communication authorizing the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the use of tax increment financing funds in the amount of $345,000 for certain improvements at Frank J. Wilson[1515.83] Park located at 4630 North Milwaukee Avenue located in the 45th Ward. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 17 is a communication authorizing the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the use of tax increment financing funds in the amount of 200,000 dollars for certain improvements at Winnebago Park located at 5001 North Levitt Street located in the 40th Ward. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 18 is a communication authorizing the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the use of tax increment financing funds in the amount of 300,000 dollars for certain improvements at Washington Park located at 5531 South Martin Luther King Drive in the 20th and 4th Wards. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Item number 19 is a communication authorizing the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the use of tax increment financing funds in the amount of 110,000 dollars for certain improvements at Amundson Park located at 6200 West Bloomingdale Avenue located in the 29th Ward. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 20 is a communication authorizing the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the use of tax increment financing funds in the amount of 125,000 dollars for certain improvements at Brighton Park located at 3542 South Richmond Avenue located in the 12th Ward. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And finally, for the Park District, item number 21 is a communication authorizing the City of Chicago to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Park District for the use of tax increment financing funds, TIF funds, in the amount of 10 million dollars for major design and construction at Reese Park located at 6100 West Fullerton Avenue in the 30th Ward. The item was approved by the committee by voice vote. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number 22 is regarding monthly settlements through the law department, and this will be placed on file with the clerk. And items 23 and 24 consist of authorizations for the payment of various small claims against the city and denials of payment of various small claims against the city. If there is no objection, Madam President, I ask that these items be placed on the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 25 consists of two orders authorizing tag day permits for, number one, Children International Incorporated. This is for citywide, April 1st through May 31st, 2021. And the second is for Park Lawn, Far Southwest Side, for April 2nd and 3rd and 9th and 10th, 2021. If there's no objection, I ask that these items be placed on the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And Madam President, this concludes the report of the Committee on Finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Wiegas. Back next up, the Committee on Budget and Government Operations, Chairman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for your committee on the budget and government operations, which held a meeting on March 17th, 2021. The committee recommends passage of the following item. A substitute ordinance concerning an amendment to the annual appropriation ordinance year 2021 within Fund 925 for the Office of Budget and Management, the Department of Cultural Affairs and Special Events, the Department of Assets, Information and Services, the Department of Public Health, the Department of Family and Support Services, the Department of Planning and Development, the Department of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection, the Department of Transportation, the Department of Aviation and Authorization of Emergency Rental Assistance Program Software Contract. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
This concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Dow. The next up, Committee on Economic Capital and Technology, Chairman Wiegas.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which held a meeting March 11th, 2021. The committee recommends passage of the following item. Resolution calling for hearings on implementation of guaranteed income initiative, cash-based programs, and policies to help working people and families become more resilient to financial emergencies for which a hearing was held on the same day. Alderman Haddon would like to speak on the resolution.
Thank you, Chairman.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. I am very excited. We had a wonderful hearing in committee, and I really commend Chairman Wiegas for your leadership in bringing this to committee and to council. We're met with, we're met with a real challenge here and an opportunity to bring Chicago forward, for Chicago to be a leader. Working on a guaranteed income pilot is going to be a direct benefit to our residents. We have had the experience over the last year of facilitating direct payments. We've got other cities in our country who have stood up and showed us the way. We're getting data from some of these first pilots, and I know that the residents of the City of Chicago, in this great time of economic need, and us as a city council with a real opportunity to try something different, and I'd say even a mandate to do things differently, really should move forward on this pilot. So I look forward, Chairman Wiegas and with Chairwoman King and the rest of our colleagues on advancing this pilot and seeing how we can really make guaranteed income work for Chicagoans. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. Let me just say this. Until we deal with the issue of reparations in the City of Chicago, there's no way in hell we can support direct payments to anybody other than the American descendants of slaves in the City of Chicago. I think these conversations are slap in the face to people that have suffered great atrocity through time in this country, and to not have either something in parody or something remotely resembling of something to help those, us as American descendants of slaves, I think is something that we really need to think about prior to doing this. So we have all these conversations about other communities, but again, when it comes down to dealing with black folks, not only in the City of Chicago, but in America, we're always at a backseat. So I hope that that conversation expands dramatically over the course of time to include people that truly have been hurt, who have built, built this country in that regard. Thank you.
Alderman Haddon, do you have your hand raised again? Or maybe the hand raised for the first time? I think you spoke before, before I called upon you and recognized you.
Yes, Madam President, I do have my hand raised. Thank you. I just actually, I wanted to support some of what Chairman Irvin had to say and make sure that our colleagues know that this universal basic income or guaranteed income pilot is not designated for any subset of people. And I think that in conversations with colleagues, there is a lot of synergy and a lot of discussions to have, and we've got this great subcommittee on reparations, and we need to be moving forward together in talking about reparations and talking about guaranteed income as well. But just for clarification, the pilot that we're talking about is not designated for any particular group, and there's a lot of space to work on this. So, thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President, and again, good afternoon, colleagues. I too rise in support of this resolution, and I want to thank its introductory sponsors for their effort on this. To Alderman Irvin's point, yes, reparations is a discussion all to itself. We have a subcommittee for that, and Chairwoman Stephanie Coleman Mett has done a great job beginning those, taking those first steps for Chicago. But this issue is going after the group that crosses every demographic, the poor, the struggling, those trying and striving to make it, who are unable to do so. And as I said during committee, I will say again, I would rather put millions of dollars directly in the hands of our residents who can choose how to spend it themselves than to continue to spend millions of dollars paying third-party organizations to tell those poor, those struggling, those striving to survive, how to make their life better. This impacts every community, not just one. And it is something that I think is high time in this city that we take seriously, and how we help those individuals, whether they're African-American, Latino, Asian, white, whatever group you want to say they are. There's poor amongst all of us, and being able to help them directly to see how they're going to put their dollars, how they so choose, is a much better approach than to continuously fund those poverty pimps and organizations that try to profit on the backs of other people suffering. We will continue the discussion on reparations. It's absolute must, but this is something separate, as is that discussion, and there's no stopping us from doing both simultaneously. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman King.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I'd like to echo the sentiment of Chairman Irvin. Definitely have to deal with reparations and also echo the sentiment of Alderman Haddon. I don't think they're mutually exclusive. I think we could talk about this while we're talking about, you know, this very ordinance on guaranteed income. You know, I'd like to thank Chairman Wiegas for his leadership here. Want to also acknowledge Alderman Haddon and her leadership. You know, guaranteed income is obviously important, as everybody is pointing out. There are groups of people who need this income. This is actually an idea that Dr. King had. He was thinking about during his Poor People's Campaign before his untimely death, and it is definitely what our city needs right now for our vulnerable families. We'll soon, you know, have billions of dollars from this new stimulus package, and we should use it wisely, but propping up our economy and families, especially those that are suffering, is a good use of those resources. This would be a City of Chicago stimulus check, if you will, or cash, you know? As I said before, cash is king. But I was really impressed during the hearings to hear some of the great outcomes of the other pilots. They said increased employment. That's something that we should strive for. Decreased stress and anxiety. Decreased income volatility. So Chicago families and the economy would benefit from this economic boost and stability of a guaranteed income. It would give our most vulnerable folks a boost that they need. It would give our economy a boost and our city a boost. And so, you know, I am in support and proud to stand with my co-sponsors on this, and would like to reiterate that, you know, reparations is important and could be a part of this as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. I am flummoxed, to be honest with you, with the resolution. I must be missing something on our finances, which is raised property taxes just last October. People are losing their homes. There's gentrification. There's displacement going on because of the affordability part of it. I don't disagree with the need, though. I don't disagree with that at all. But how do we accomplish this with this initiative? And I do take heart with my colleague. When he talks about reparations, the needs are plenty, but there are priorities. You know, Jason is right that you got to prioritize those needs. African-Americans have been highly affected by racism and by displacement and lack of economic opportunity and housing discrimination. There's so many things that we can talk about this. We can talk about all the groups that also have faced similar situations, but not like African-Americans, as you can tell by the west side and the south side of Chicago and where we're at with their economies and crime and so forth. And so, I'd rather be talking about that. If we're going to be talking about any, any money going out to anybody, I want to talk about that first before we get into, you know, universal income, which I don't know how you pay for that, and I don't know how you can tax people that are from various parts of the city evenly, and I don't know how you can convince them that that's something that is coming out of their pocket to go into somebody else's pocket that's going to make the world, the world a better place. There's money coming from Washington, no doubt about it, but it's coming for specific purposes. It's got line items. It's got their different buckets. It is not to spend wildly, I don't think. Maybe I'm mistaken, Madam President, maybe you can correct me on that, but I think that we got to be judicious about what's coming, about where we go. But I stand with my colleague Jason Irvin on this. Priorities, priorities, priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam President, for the opportunity to speak and to help unflummox those who may feel flummoxed. As the Vice Chair of the Reparations Subcommittee, I absolutely respect and agree with Chairman Irving that, you know, we need to make sure that there is parity and that the African descendants of slavery are seeing reparations, which is something we formed a subcommittee to talk through. I think there's a, you know, as far as revenue streams, there is a cannabis revenue to have a conversation about. We have the federal funds coming as well. I do believe, as shared by Alderman Lopez, that we have the most impact when those dollars are put directly in the hands of neighbors across the city. You know, we're often told how much we feel for people's struggle, yet we don't make the steps to actually address it. And, you know, in talking about where would you find the money, I don't see that same conversation when we talk about the CPD budget, which is 1.7 billion, or adding federal funds to that budget, you know, when we don't get results when it comes to public safety. So if we're going to talk about where money is coming from, it's where it's been coming from, but it's just been appropriated in the wrong place, is what I would argue. I think that there is a lot of courage, and I applaud Alderman Wiegas and Alderman Haddon for raising this issue. I think it's something that we need to make more than just a resolution, especially when we're seeing other cities that are actively taking the steps to fund people, especially those that are most in need. I really appreciate Alderman Cardenas really pointing out all the different struggles people have to go through with housing, with discrimination and segregation in the city. That, to me, it's somewhat inconscionable to say that it would be a bad decision to help people in that. I think if you give folks the amount of funds they could then use to help stimulate the economy, it also helps to address a lot of things and makes our city safer. So I think when we talk about where funds need to be allocated, this is an easy one, as opposed to putting it into the CPD budget when we're leaking out 52 million dollars worth of settlements every year. But I thank those who are pushing forward on this issue and look forward to having a conversation that isn't just about a resolution, but about taking action. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll be brief because I don't want to belabor the point. You know, I'm in agreement with Chairman Irving, unless the conversation is had around, and I think it's not an either or, it can be both, but unless that conversation happens around the descendants of slaves, first and foremost, then I don't think that this issue can move forward. I don't want to speak for the members of the Black Caucus. I'm speaking for myself as an African-American in the City of Chicago. I think that it is important that that conversation is held first. It can be held together, but there needs to be a prioritization of reparations, and you can call it what you want, you can call it universal income. If it is not talked about as something that is going to focus on this descendants of slaves first, I don't, I think that's a nonstarter for me. I am in agreement with Alderman Irvin. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Presidents, and I want to congratulate Alderman Wiegas and Alderman Haddon and Sophia King for presenting this effort and for organizing a very well-planned and very informative hearing on the matter, notwithstanding the very important and critical issue of reparations, in which I support wholeheartedly the efforts going on there. I do feel like we need to correct the record. To be Democrats, to be individuals who believe in government playing a role in stimulating the economy, there is no sector that we know that stimulates our economy more than working class people, and when we put money in the hands directly of working class folks. Let the record show that strategic government investments in those populations add disproportionately to economic outcomes. These types of endeavors in other cities have aided in the local economies there, as we heard in the hearing, and they will do so here as well. So I just wanted to establish that. There are significant public studies from reputable institutions that refer to this matter, and I think the question is not whether we can afford such an effort, it's whether we can afford not doing such an effort. So I thank you for the time, Madam President. I concur with my colleagues on the reparations issue. This should be handled in unison, in my opinion. Thank you very much for the time, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to join in with my colleague Alderman Irvin. And one thing for sure I want you to know, when I came in office 20 years ago, then Alderman Doiter Tillman had introduced a resolution into City Council regarding reparation. I also can remember.
Speak up, Kamala.
I'm not sure if I'm on mute. Let me see. Can you hear me? Is that better?
Yes.
Could you find?
We can hear you.
Hello? Oh. Back in, when I came into office, my colleague Alderman Tillman had introduced a resolution into City Council, calling them for hearings on reparation. We made great strive back then toward talk, but no action. Reparation is one to mean a lot. A lot for the lack of education, the disparity in healthcare, things that we have been deprived of, not just now, but from our parents, grandparents, and it's a reflect on today here in the United States of America. here in the United States of America. Unjust due from the banks who said that they were going to make sure they equalize the system. It is not fair. Today, we can't go into places to get decent jobs because whether it is they don't speak bilingual, which hinders them from getting that opportunity to be able to be in line for those type of jobs. Reparation need to be paid. It has not only affect our past generation, the present, but the future as well. There is not enough to pay, but certainly we need to start with just that. And then we can become a whole, to be able to work together. And I appreciate the effort of my colleagues and what they have presented and what they're trying to do. But reparation should be front and center for blacks here in the city of Chicago. And that's my statement. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Michelle Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. The country right now is engaged in an experiment right now, to some extent, of a form of universal basic income, which is the stimulus checks that are being sent to thousands and thousands of America. And I think that a federal approach to this issue is much more reasonable and justified. Our city is climbing back from the financial abyss, and I don't think that we should repeat the errors that we made in the 2008 crisis, which was to spend every dime that we could think of. And then when the first recession hit, we had to sell the parking meters and then use up all those assets. So I think we have to be very careful about a resolution that says, oh gee whiz, we're getting this money from the feds. Let's go spend it on something. We have to be very careful about it. And I do think that the issues around universal basic income are something that should be looked at as a federal program, not a particular city's. I also want to support the efforts of my co-members of the Reparations Committee, and I want to support what Alderman Mitz and Alderman Irving had to say. Issues concerning reparations have to do with specific activities that occurred in our city as part of our history that we must look at and figure out how to make amends for. And that's something that should really take our attention. Attention that is so often diverted for so long by other issues. And so while I understand some of the arguments in favor of universal income, and as I said, we're actually in a little bit of an experiment right now federally with it. I say, let's see how it goes. I do not think that this is the appropriate venue for it, and I'd like to be recorded as voting no on this item. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I understand both sides. Alderman Irving's frustration with reparation and African Americans not getting attention and people not recognizing reparations and deciding to do something with that. You know, for years with other nationalities and countries, they, people found a way to figure out a way to get things back, right? But with the African Americans or dark people or people of color, you know, it's challenging. But at the same time, I do know that our society is in a crisis. I also know that all of us, I think every, I know mostly all of the African-American wars have a diverse community. You know, it may be predominantly African-American, but we represent everyone. We have a lot of people in our communities right now that are suffering, that can use some money. Now, this is just a resolution, a resolution. We don't know if, you know, we're going to try to see if that's possible. I think from this, if something like this could happen, definitely we should be able to get reparations for people of African-American descent. So I, I'm going to support this under one condition, that I know that we can start working on trying to do the same thing for African-Americans with reparation. This is a resolution. We could have done our own resolution also to say the same thing. So we can try to work on both of them and maybe say that we give everybody else this amount, but we give African-Americans more. You know what I'm saying? Because our folks did suffer. You know, a lot of people in our community, you know, were sharecroppers even after they got free, you know, and people made them work hard and kept robbing them and stealing from them and continued to make them work for free, put them in jail so they can work on farms and all of those things. I mean, our people really have suffered in this society. You know, other folks, they work for lower wages by choice. We were made to work for lower wages, you know, and it wasn't a choice. We didn't have any other choice. But at the same time, you know, this is an opportunity to, if this worked, then definitely reparations should work. So if we can work on this and we can go down this road, we definitely should be able to go down the same road for reparation. So I call, I call for the question. I move, I move to call the question.
Madam Chair, prior to that, I'd like to make a final statement if possible.
Chairman, the Chair recognizes Chairman Villegas, but we do have a pending motion without any objection. So you'll speak, and then Madam Clerk, I'd ask that the roll be called.
Thank you, Madam President. To my colleagues, this is not a that or this or this is, let's not, let's not let us be divided on this issue. These are two separate issues. One related to funding that's coming from the American Rescue Plan that every Democrat in Congress and in the Senate that I voted for, as well as the President saw it so timely that he pushed up the signing date in order to get this law implemented as soon as possible. Because we recognize that people are hurting. This pandemic has been devastated communities for a year, and it's been an equal opportunity destroyer of communities, white, black, Latino. And so what this is, is just talking about a pilot, taking a look at approximately less than 2% of the funding that's coming to take a look at a guaranteed basic income program. There's been, this is not a novel idea. This has been replicated in other cities. As a matter of fact, this trend is continuing to grow because they understand that there's communities out there that are not able to afford to live in the city that they call home. And one of my colleagues talked about taxes. And I have to say that this has nothing to do related to city taxes. This is our funding that's coming from the federal government, and it could be used as a pilot. Other cities have used the not-for-profit and philanthropic world in order to help supplement the program once it was up and running. So that way, they would have the ability to take a look at some of the outcomes that have taken place. This program has not been spoken of in the past because the funding wasn't there. Now we're talking about the American Rescue Plan, $1.8 billion that's coming to Chicago and taking a look at less than 2% for a pilot program. And this is what this is, to start the discussion about this. There's communities, there's single moms and communities in the city of Chicago that are hurting. And the reason why I brought this resolution forward is because as a young boy, growing up with a single mother and two brothers, had it not been for, and losing my father at a young age, had it not been for the survival's benefits that was given to us per social security, it might have been a different outcome for my family. And so here's an opportunity again, just to take a look at implementing a pilot program. We can definitely work out all the details around who's eligible. But this is not a if, if, this is not a reparations or a guaranteed basic income. We can have those discussions together. So that's what I wanted to say, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazato. But again, I'm going to remind the body, we have a pending motion to call the question without objection. So after Spazato, Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask you to call the roll, please.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I think I finally understand what's going on. I'm embarrassed to say. So all this is, Madam President, is just discussion about possibly doing something like this, universal basic income. This isn't proving any universal basic income, not proven any funds. Again, it's just about creating a discussion. Is that correct?
That is my understanding, Alderman. There's no, there's no specific program. That certainly hasn't been discussed with the administration. This is a complicated issue. This is just a resolution to talk more.
All right. Well, thank you. I believe, yes, it is. I don't know why we have to vote on this. Okay, now I understand. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Laspada.
Let me just remind, remind the body, this is a vote on this particular resolution to explore the possibility of a pilot program on UBI.
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Hopkins.
No.
Alderman Hopkins is a no. Alderman Dow.
No.
Alderman Dow is a no. Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman King is an aye. Alderman Harrison.
Aye.
Alderman Harrison is an aye. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Harris.
No.
Alderman Harris is a no. Alderman Beal.
No.
Alderman Beal is a no. Alderman Zlasky Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Zlasky Garza is an aye. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson, I didn't hear you. Could you say it again?
Aye.
Aye. Alderman Thompson is an aye. Alderman Cardenas.
It's a no.
Alderman Cardenas is a no. Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn is an aye. Alderman Burke.
No.
Alderman Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Lopez is an aye. Alderman Coleman.
No.
Alderman Coleman is a no. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Moore is an aye. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is an aye. Alderman O'Shea.
No.
Alderman O'Shea is a no. Alderman Taylor.
Yes.
Alderman Taylor is an aye. Alderman Brookins.
No.
Alderman Brookins is a no. Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez is an aye. Alderman Tabarez.
Yes.
Alderman Tabarez is an aye. Alderman Scott.
No.
Alderman Scott is a no. Alderman Tito Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Tito Lopez is an aye. Alderman Malinato.
Aye.
Alderman Malinato is an aye. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Urban.
No.
Alderman Urban is a no. Alderman Teleferro.
No.
Alderman Teleferro is a no. Alderman Raboyas.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona.
Alderman Otis.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona is an aye. Alderman Wagas Pack.
Aye.
Wagas Pack is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is an aye. Alderman Austin.
No.
Alderman Austin is a no. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Aye.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is an aye. Alderman Villegas.
Aye.
Alderman Villegas is an aye. Alderman Mitz.
No.
Alderman Mitz is a no. Alderman Spazato.
Alderman Spazato is a no.
Alderman Spazato is a no. Alderman Nugent. Aye. Alderman Nugent is an aye. Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez is an aye. Alderman De Palatano.
No.
Alderman De Palatano is a no. Alderman Riley.
No.
Alderman Riley is a no. Alderman Smith.
No.
Alderman Smith is a no. Alderman Tunny.
Aye.
Alderman Tunny is an aye. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Kappelman.
Aye.
Alderman Kappelman is an aye. Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Martin is an aye. Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman is an aye. Alderman Hadden.
Aye.
Alderman Hadden is an aye. Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein is an aye. Did I miss anyone?
Alderman Laspada is an aye.
Alderman Laspada is an aye.
Alderman Gardner is an aye.
Alderman Gardner is an aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, when the clerk calls your name and you are missed, what I would ask is that you use your, raise your hand function, and then we can call you at the end of the vote so that we have an orderly process. People yelling out during the middle of the vote is not helpful.
Anyone else missed? All right, Peter?
There are no other hands raised.
Oh, go ahead.
I said there are no other hands raised, so we can proceed.
Okay, thank you. Peter?
Your Honor, there are 30 ayes, 18 nays.
The resolution passes Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to reconsider that last vote and the resolution.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay.
No.
No.
The nays have it, the motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Villegas.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development also held a meeting on March 16, 2021. The committee recommends passage of the following items. Items 1 through 4 are a series of appointments and reappointments to various special service areas. These items were voted on collectively. Michael A. Moreno is a member of SSA Number 25 Little Village Commission. Joe Oliveri is a member of SSA Number 28-2014 Sixth Corners Commission. And Yulia Scubida and Evan Mulner as members of SSA Number 29 West Town Commission. I move passes of these items by the same motion. Strike that. I move passes this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 5 is an ordinance in support of a Class 6B tax incentive for property located at 1100 West 37th Street. I move passes of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 6 is, item 6 is an ordinance in support of Class 6B tax incentive for property at 4616 to 4624 West Superior Street. I move passes of the item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 7 is an ordinance for an amendment of municipal code section 4-6-270 to modify requirements for application for or renewal of regulated business license for home occupations. This item is being held in committee and will be called upon next month. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. Next up, the Committee on Housing and Real Estate, Chairman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held a virtual meeting on March 16, 2021. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following. Item number 1 is a negotiated sale of city-owned vacant property at 5108 West Lake and 5062 West Lake Street. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 2 is a negotiated sale of city-owned property at 1900 South Prairie to Cement 3 LLC. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 3 is a sale of vacant city-owned property at 5428 South Princeton to Hattie L. Kane Fulton. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 4 is a negotiated sale of city-owned vacant property at 1253 South Karlov to Keanya D. Bell. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 5 is a sale of city-owned property at 2152 West Adams Street to Sad Jadi. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 6 is a sale of city-owned property at 2943 West Fulton Street to Dwight Lee. Item six is the sale of city-owned property at 2943 West Fulton Street to Dwight Lee. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item seven is a substituted ordinance for the Second Amendment to the ground lease agreement with Music and Dance Theater, Inc., DBA Harris Theater for Music and Dance, formerly Music and Dance Theater, Chicago, to acquire additional use rights at Pritzker Skates Stage and Associated Properties of Millennium Park North and South Prominades and Terrace and certain venues at the Cultural Center revising rental and expense contribution fees. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item eight is the amendment to the Municipal Code Section 2-44-080 regarding the 30-year renewable term supporting Chicago Community Land Trust properties under the ARO. If there's no objection, I make the same motion with the exception of Alderman Lopez, who would like to be recorded as a no.
Alderman Lopez, does that take care of your issue?
Yes, Madam.
Okay. Thank you. With that exception, the.
Madam President, that concludes my report, but I'd like to say, go Ramblers. Thank you.
Next up, the Committee on License and Consumer Protection, Chairman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the City Council. I'm reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a virtual meeting on March 17th, 2021, and the following item were passed by the committee. 02021-921, an ordinance to amend the effective date of the shared housing reform ordinance. I move that the City Council incur in the recommendation of the License Committee and pass this item by the same roll call vote as item number one of the Committee on Finance and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Raboyos.
Madam Chair, item number one on the, on the License Committee, my colleague, my esteemed colleague from the 16th Ward, and I wish to defer and publish the item number 02021-735 regarding the private booting.
Chairman Raboyos, we are not at that item yet. We're on a different item, which is an amendment of the Shared Housing Reform Ordinance. So you're a little premature, but you can come back in when that item is called.
Never mind.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. If I may continue.
Yeah, so hearing no objection to the first item, so ordered.
Thank you. Item number two is 02021-735, an ordinance to prohibit booting of motor vehicles on, on by private property within the first ward.
The Chair recognizes Chairman Raboyos.
Thank you, Madam President. My esteemed colleague and I, from the 16th Ward, wish to defer and publish this item, 02021-735 regarding private booting.
And it will be deferred.
Thank you, Madam.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you, Madam President.
Was going to try to allay the concerns that I know had been communicated to my colleague, but it, it looks like that moment has passed. Thank you, Madam President.
Got to be quicker on the draw. All right, Chairman, Chairman Mitz, you've dealt with items one and two. What's the next on your agenda?
There were one item left lifted in moratorium in the 40th Ward. I move passes of item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Next up is the Committee on Pedestrian Traffic Safety, Alderman Burnett.
Thank, thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian Traffic Safety, for which a meeting was held on Thursday, March 18th, 2021. Before the committee, there were 98 items. There were 97 routine items that passed and one routine traffic item that did not pass. I move passage of these items in the omnibus. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up, the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation, Chairman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the City Council, also known as the Happy Committee. Reporting on your Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation, for which a virtual meeting was held on March 10th, 2021. The committee recommends passes of the following items. Item number 1, 2021-781, Authorization for Annual Programs and Events Contracted by Department of Cultural Affairs and Special Events for year 2021. I move passage of this item by the first, most favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two, Expenditure of Open Space Impact Fees for capital improvements in expansion of Donovan Park at 3609 South Laconica Avenue, including acquisition and remediation of private parcel at 837 West 36th Street. I move passage of this item by the same motion, and there are, if there are no objections.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Congratulations, Alderman Thompson, and thank you, Madam Presidents. This concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Next up, the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, Chairman Brookins.
Good morning, afternoon, Your Honor. Reporting for your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, a meeting which was held on March 18th, 2021. The following ordinances were passed by a majority of the members present. On pages two through 13 include 140 ordinances for grants of privileges introduced by the local aldermen from wards one through three, five through seven, nine, eleven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-seven through thirty-three, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-eight through forty-four, forty-six through forty-eight, and fifty. Page 14 includes 13 ordinances for canopies introduced by the local aldermen from wards two, eleven, twenty-seven, forty-two through forty-four, forty-seven, and forty-eight. Page 15 and 16 include 13 ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local aldermen from wards one, eight, twelve, fifteen, twenty-one, twenty-seven, thirty, thirty-seven, forty-two, forty-three, forty-seven, and forty-eight. Page 17 includes one subdivision ordinance located in the 12th Ward. Madam President, if there are no objections, I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Your Honor, that concludes my report.
Right, next up, the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, Chairman Tony.
Madam President and members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, for which held a meeting on March 15th, 2021. Reports our group for convenience, the following item was passed by the majority of the members present. Page one contains a text amendment of Municipal Code Title 17 regarding requirements associated with manufacturing in planned manufacturing districts. I move.
Roll call, please.
Let's see. I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider, noting that Alderman Beal, Alderman Mike Rodriguez, Alderman Byron Tito Lopez, Maria Haddon, and Alderman Matt, or Alderman Matt Martin will be recorded voting no.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Thank you so much, Chairwoman. I would just like to say that I'm disappointed that this does not have the support of any environmental group. We had an opportunity here to do something to really address environmental justice. And for that reason, I'm going to have to join with my other colleagues and be recorded as a no vote. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam President, for the reasons stated by my colleague, Alderman Ramirez Rosa. I'd also like to be recorded.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
I would similarly like to be recorded as a no vote. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Jeanette Taylor.
Madam Chair, I'd like to be recorded as a no as well.
The Chair rec, thank you, Alderman Taylor. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. Standing in solidarity with all of the environmental groups that did not sign on or supported this ordinance and with the recognition that we could have done much better, I am a no.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Harrison.
Yes, Madam President, I also would like to be registered as voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I wish to actually commend your administration with working with my colleagues, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Garza, and trying to come up with a compromise that makes sense for our communities. Perfect, far from it. Better than where it was when it was introduced, absolutely. And I think we can continue to make modifications from this starting point. And with that, I would ask my colleagues to join in an aye vote and ask for a roll call to be taken at the end. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Zlasky Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I would like to speak to this. I support this ordinance, and it was, it was a lot of hard work by a lot of people. And I want you to know that when this first, when this ordinance was first introduced, it, it sent everything, every development went to the zoning board of appeals. The environmental groups signed on to that because they felt that it was a community process. But I have to speak to that issue because the large, the large recycling facility that is in, has been in my ward for 29 years. When they wanted to merge with the recycling facility from the north end, it was sent to the ZBA for a special use permit. My community showed up to that ZBA and no one listened. Nobody on that ZBA listened. They, they gave it, and here we are, three years later, with all hell breaking loose because of the recycling facility that's, that's coming to my ward. So the ZBA was not the answer. We found a compromise, and when people talk about not meeting with the environmental groups, I had, in the six years that I've been in office, I had my chief of staff pull my calendar. I've met with these folks 91 times. The issues that are in this ordinance, the air quality survey, the traffic study, the banning implosions, the banning incinerators, the banning landfills. No one knows these issues better than me, because we had incinerators in my ward. I have nine landfills. All these things are now put into place, and those environmental controls never existed before. So these mitigations are something that I'm very proud of. And is it, is it perfect? No. Do the developers like it? No. Because now they all have to build to the green sustainability policy. These mitigations were never in place before, and I'm proud of what we've done, what we've done here. And I think it's a step forward for the whole city and for what we need to do when it comes to the environment. And no one knows that better than me and the people that live in the 10th Ward. I encourage my colleagues to please support this, because we cannot go back to the status quo. Thank you.
I thank you, Alderman Garza. The Chair recognizes Alderman King.
Yes, Madam President, I too would like to be recorded as a no.
Thank you, Alderman King. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President. I just would like to take this opportunity to commend you and your administration on compromising. When, when this was first introduced, I had several property owners from my ward for which I represent the Kenzie Industrial Area, which is one of the largest industrial areas in the city outside of probably Alderman Sugaza and Alderman Thompson. But a lot of my property owners had challenges with it. You listen to their challenges. Of course, they didn't get everything that they wanted out of these compromises. But you, you moved forward and you gave them a large percentage of what they wanted. But at the same time, to also deal with the back environmental issues, because there were some things in the, in the ordinance that didn't quite affect the environmental issues. And, and a lot of people were concerned about that. So I commend Alderman Thompson and also Alderman Gaza for educating everyone, communicating with everyone, constantly, you know, talking to the administration and, and working out some compromises. I think, you know, sooner or later, everyone would get what they want or close to what they want if they keep working on it. But I think this is a good first step to address a lot of those issues that people were concerned about. So I commend the administration, and I commend Alderman Gaza and Alderman Thompson for their diligent work and, and also informing the alderman of what the real issues were in reference to this. So I support this. I vote yeah.
The Chair, thank you, Alderman Burnett. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I initially signed on to this ordinance very, very early. And I stuck with this ordinance for months. Very willing to listen, very willing to, to, to come to a middle ground. That made some sense, and that brought everybody together to a middle ground. But in the last waning days of this ordinance, there were concessions, and those concessions were to industry. And those concessions to industry were at the expense of the months of conversations with environmentalists, who at the end of this, not a single one chose to support this ordinance. I think that when we study our history, and we look particularly at the federal governments and at industrial regulation, we find that whenever we go after industry to be more accountable to community, more engaging, the sky falls. The sky falls, and we sometimes, at the expense of better policy, wilt to their wishes. I think that's what happened here. I wish we could have done better. I think there are some good steps here. But we didn't do good enough on this one, and that's why this ordinance does not have my support. And I hope that we will do better in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to chime in and thank Alderman Garza and Thompson for all their hard work with the administration, you too, Madam President. So thank everybody for all their hard work and what you've accomplished, and you will have my support. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Spazato. The Chair recognizes Alderman Thompson.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. As mentioned, this has been a long, long journey. And I want to thank all my colleagues for listening. Even if you disagree, I appreciate the opportunity to have discussions. I want to thank all the stakeholders who've been involved from both sides of the issue. And especially Mayor, I'd like to thank you and your staff for working, collaborating to, to bring this ordinance before us. Of course, we're not all going to agree, not everyone's going to agree on all the provisions. But I think we have to look and see what exactly we accomplished with this ordinance versus what we initially started out with. And the big difference, I think Alderman Garza touched on, was by sending something to the zoning board of appeals doesn't provide any environmental protection. It doesn't help with the air quality. It potentially could, perhaps they could put limitations on. But what we did here and what we've put into this ordinance are certain restrictions. First of all, I want to commend you for eliminating specific uses in the city that no longer need to be here, like sanitary landfills and mining, excavation, and incinerators. By strengthening the oversight on recycling, intensive manufacturing, freight terminals, and then working on the warehousing, wholesale, and freight movement to make every single one of those developments abide by the city's Department of Planning Sustainable Policies. Every single one of those buildings will adhere to the sustainable policies, to be LEED certified, as well as site plan approval, which includes an air quality study as well as a traffic study. Both are critical for air quality. So this ordinance, in the end... So this ordinance, in the end, goes, I believe, much further than what was initially proposed. I can't speak to why certain groups supported one version versus another. I know some of the environmental groups in my ward didn't support either. But we're trying to move this forward. Of course, if there's changes and tweaks, we've all said we're going to work together. Most importantly, we talked about having a more strategic plan. And under your leadership, to have the planning department continue to review our planned manufacturing development, the districts each year and evaluate, do we have to make modifications? And looking as to where the city is going and where the country is going with development. So I commend you, I commend my colleagues, and I appreciate everyone listening. And especially, I also wanted to commend Alderman Cardenas for his help in getting this across the finish line. And as far as our Chairman, Chairman Tony, thank you for allowing for such a robust discussion and for this ordinance to be finalized. And hopefully, we will have a successful vote today. And I'm asking and encouraging all my colleagues to please vote in support of this ordinance. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Thompson. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. And I thank my colleagues Alderman Garza and Alderman Thompson for their significant input in this legislation. And thank you, Madam President. This is a landmark legislation, in my opinion, that changes the approach to land use planning. You know, people ask, what does it do? It's accountability. People want an accountability. They want a transparency. They wanted their government to work for them. And this ordinance requires intensive public hearings. It requires air monitoring. It requires environmental assessments and traffic studies. I mean, it's a huge deal. And, you know, this legislation is inclusive than I've seen in others, especially in the community engagement process where it was not the case. And we talked about CBA and how that was not the best option for many of us. You know, many of us have been scolded for not doing enough. And many still say that it doesn't go far enough. And because it doesn't go far enough, it's not worth supporting. Mind you, I just talked about better land use planning, plan developments versus right of zoning, community engagement, air quality studies, air monitoring. And that's significant steps to improve air quality in the city. I've said it before, status quo is just not an option. And finally, Madam President, I'm going to quote Voltaire by saying, "Don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good." This is good legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to speak to some of what people were sharing on the ordinance. Because what was first introduced, the initial draft of this was really exciting, was genuinely transformative. The version of this that was first brought forward by your administration and my colleague Alderman Rodriguez was very exciting and something I was ready to enthusiastically vote for. When it was moved from review by the zoning board of appeals to the plan commission, was a strike that was a tough one to take. In part because our neighbors want to know that there is a deliberative process. It might not always be as fully democratic as they would like, but they want a public deliberative process. That was difficult. When the carve-out was made for transportation and logistics and warehousing, that was where I had to move towards being a no vote. Because it's what we hear from. It's what even us who are northside wards, we hear from folks wanting to know, what are you doing to make sure that when we re-concentrate manufacturing and industry in particular vocations, it's going to be safe and healthy for our communities? When that carve-out went into place, when even groups like the Illinois Environmental Council said this no longer has our support, that's when I felt compelled to withdraw my support. Now, I'll close by saying equity means that the solutions we put forward reflect the interests and concerns of the communities that harm is being done to. And when those communities say to us, this is not the solution, then we have to say that there's still work to be done. I hope that we continue doing that work, but I cannot vote in favor of this particular measure today.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Sichio Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think it's important to put this in context. I hear the argument that of incremental change. However, in this particular issue of air quality, we cannot longer continue to operate the way that the city has operated for too long. The effects of air pollution are devastating in some of our communities. And I want to mention some numbers so that people can understand what's at stake here. We have, in the city of Chicago right now, black and brown kids whose asthma rates are triple the asthma rates in other communities. I think that we need to understand the impact that this has in the cognitive development, missing classroom and so forth, missing classes and so forth. The issue of environmental, the issues of the environment are severe in many of our communities. I myself oversee an industrial corridor where we have community effects that continue time after time to affect the health and well-being of residents in the middle of a pandemic. Now, I think that what we see in front of us is a compromise that is extremely welcomed by the industry, but is not welcomed by one single environmental group in the city of Chicago. So I think that to us, an understanding that we need to do more for us to have real teeth, to have real legislation, real regulation, to address the community effects, the dispollution, the air quality. I mean, these are issues that are affecting tremendously our communities. And to continue to talk about empowerment of our communities or equity when our legislation fall way short of what we can be doing to really ensuring that there are impact studies, that there are studies that help our communities actually have community prerogative. With Aldermanic prerogative, it has to come community prerogative. So our residents are included in the decision and that we can prevent further damage to their health. Community effects is something that we must be considered. We don't have that. We don't have community prerogative. We don't have any legislation that will ensure impact studies, that will prevent more pollution in communities in areas that have been devastated like southeast Chicago or appeals in other communities. This is going, this falling way short of what's possible and what's needed. That's what I will be voting on in this legislation and urging our colleagues to take environmental justice serious and to take equity serious, seriously, so that we can move towards a community where every community has clean air and clean water. That's not the case right now in the city of Chicago and we need to demand more for our public officials.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Chairman Tony.
Mayor and members of the council, as evidenced by today's debate, there's a lot of strong feelings on both sides of the issue. I think this is incremental and I just wanted to put a little bit of a voice that hasn't been spoke about today. I look at Alderman Burke and Alderman Burke and I served on the Economic Development Commission during the years, in my years, from 1989 to 2001. And during that time, a large number of the, what we called protected manufacturing districts were established to try to make sure that Chicago was protecting its manufacturing base and the fact that we are a city of big shoulders, but we have big industry. And I really worry at times, because I've lived in Lakeview my whole life and we used to have a robust manufacturing district up and down Lakewood and near Wrigley Field. We've lost that for a number of reasons, but encroaching residential really started to disintegrate the protected manufacturing districts that we all created to try to keep industry in the city. So while this ordinance is incremental and the times are completely different, I know that we as a city, the third largest city, are going to have to maintain strong, clean manufacturing and our logistics as the center of the country when it comes to rail, airports, and freight traffic. So these are not, you know, the cleanest of industries, but they are so essential to keep our economy and our employment there while still improving our environmental standards. So it's not perfect, as some of my colleagues have said, but this is a sea change from the time that I got involved with protected manufacturing districts. And I want to make sure that Chicago is still open for clean, sustainable businesses. And I think this is an incremental step in the right direction. And I know there's a roll call vote on it, so as I see one more hand up, but I think we're ready to take the vote, I think, Mayor.
Chairman Ragspec, did you want to speak to this matter? Otherwise, we can go to the roll call vote.
Madam President, if I could just for a second. If you read the ordinance, there are changes that were made in the ordinance from the previous version that allow for community input. And anybody who's been in front of the ZBA knows that it doesn't always go the way you want, no matter how many people you bring into the ZBA to perhaps oppose something or approve something. And I think that the proper route for this is to go to the plan commission with the review process that your commissioners have put in place. And looking at the required traffic studies, the required air quality studies, the required estimates of those to go to CDPH before there's a zoning site plan approval, I think is very important. And having listened to DPD commissioners and CDPH commissioners, this, these changes, I think, are important. Not everybody's going to agree on the ordinance, but I think that it takes us a step in the right direction that we want to go. We do need to do a lot more environmental work in the city. But having watched how we've gone about it over the last quite a few years, I think this is one of the most important steps that we've taken and I do support the ordinance. And Alderman Tony, thank you for indulging me for a second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada.
No.
Alderman Laspada is a no. Alderman Hopkins.
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins is an aye. Alderman Dow.
Aye.
Alderman Dow is an aye. Alderman King.
No.
Alderman King is a no. Alderman Harrison.
No.
Alderman Harrison is a no. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer is an aye. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell is an aye. Alderman Harris.
Aye.
Alderman Harris is an aye. Alderman Beal.
No.
Alderman Beal is a no. Alderman Zelaski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Zelaski Garza is an aye. Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson is an aye. Alderman Cardenas.
Aye.
Alderman Cardenas is an aye. Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn is an aye. Alderman Burke.
Aye.
Alderman Burke is an aye. Alderman Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Lopez is an aye. Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman is an aye. Alderman Moore.
Alderman Moore is an aye.
Alderman Moore is an aye. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is an aye. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea is an aye. Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Taylor is a no. Alderman Brookins.
Aye.
Alderman Brookins is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez.
No.
Alderman Rodriguez is a no. Alderman Tabarez.
Yes.
Alderman Tabarez is an aye. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott is an aye. Alderman Sichio Lopez.
No.
Alderman Sichio Lopez is a no. Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado is an aye. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett is an aye. Alderman Urban.
Aye.
Alderman Urban is an aye. Alderman Talaferro.
Aye.
Alderman Talaferro is an aye. Alderman Raboyas.
Aye.
Alderman Raboyas is an aye. Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona is an aye. Alderman Wagaspeck.
Aye.
Alderman Wagaspeck is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
No.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is a no. Alderman Austin.
Aye.
Alderman Austin is an aye. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Nay.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is a no. Alderman Vegas.
Aye.
Alderman Vegas is an aye. Alderman Mitz.
Aye.
Alderman Mitz is an aye. Alderman Spazato.
Spazato is a yes.
Alderman Spazato is an aye. Alderman Nugent.
Aye.
Alderman Nugent is an aye. Alderman Vasquez.
No.
Alderman Vasquez is a no. Alderman Napolitano.
Aye.
Alderman Napolitano is an aye. Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Riley is an aye. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Smith is an aye. Alderman Tony.
Aye.
Alderman Tony is an aye. Alderman Gardner.
Aye.
Alderman Gardner is an aye. Alderman Kappelman.
Aye.
Alderman Kappelman is an aye. Alderman Martin.
No.
Alderman Martin is a no. Alderman Ostrman.
Aye.
Alderman Ostrman is an aye. Alderman Haddon.
No.
Alderman Haddon is a no. Alderman Silverstein.
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein is an aye. Anyone I missed? Any hands raised? I can't see it from here.
There's, there's no hands raised. Let's proceed.
All right, Peter.
Your Honor, there are 38 yeas, 12 mayes.
The motion passes. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider that last vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay.
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 The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Tony, back to you.
Madam President, that concludes my report on the March 15th meeting. And now we'll move, Madam President, members of the City Council presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on March 23rd of 2021. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Page one contains a text amendment of Municipal Code Sections 1712-0600, 17-12-1000, 1712-1003, 1712-1005 regarding sign requirements for high-rise buildings. I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Pages one through eight contain various map amendments in the first, third, seventh, fourteenth, nineteenth, twenty-fourth, twenty-seven, thirty-first, thirty-third, fortieth, forty-third, forty-fifth, and forty-ninth wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
And lastly, page nine contains various large signs over 100 square feet in area, 24 feet above grade in the 11th, 27th, 32nd, and 42nd wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Tony. Next up, the agreed calendar. Chairman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I received from the city clerk Anna Valencia a total of 139 items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, and tributary resolutions from the mayor and the following Alderman. Alderman Harrison, Alderman Harris, Alderman Thomas, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Taylor, Alderman Irving, Alderman Spazata, Spazato, and Alderman Riley. I move these be passed in the omnibus.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, new business. Madam Clerk, please call the wards, beginning with the 50th.
Free permits, license fee exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. The zoning amendments, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. An exemption from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Haddon and others have proposed a resolution to call for public hearings to discuss plans for city council to safely resume in-person city council and committee meetings, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. meetings, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Martin and others have proposed resolution to call for subject matter hearings to establish citywide plan for electrical vehicle charging infrastructure, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Tunny and Alderman Waguspack have proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 17-3-0503 by classifying West Belmont Avenue from North Halston Street to North Southport Avenue as pedestrian retail street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Tunny and others have proposed resolution to call for subject matter hearings on hate crimes against Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders, which is referred to Committee on Public Safety. Alderman Smith has proposed order for historical landmark fee waiver for the property at 560 West Fullerton Parkway, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Riley has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Chapter 2-28 by modifying Sections 2-28-160 and 2-28-180 and adding a new section 2-28-200 to regulate decommissioning or removal of public art, which is referred to Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Alderman Riley has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Section 4-60-023 to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portions of North State Street and East Whacker Drive, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Apolitano has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Vasquez and others have proposed resolution to call for the Illinois General Assembly to pass legislation replacing the word Alderman in all places within the Illinois compiled statutes with the gender-neutral word of Alder, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations.
Budget.
Rules.
Two committees, having been called, the matters referred to the Committee on Committees Alderman Vasquez and others have proposed order to call for the Commissioner of the Department of Assets, Information, and Services to provide accurate completion time estimates for service requests in 311 system, which is referred to Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development. Alderman Vegas has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Chapter 3-57 by adding a new section 3-57-010 to regulate dispersment of transportation revenue, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alderman Vegas also has proposed orders for amendment of Municipal Code Section 4-60-130 regarding hours of operation for retail liquor businesses, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Vegas also has proposed resolution to call for hearings on economic impact of current tax exemption benefits by nonprofit hospitals, which is referred to Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development. Alderman Vegas also has proposed resolution to call for hearings on local government support.
How many more?
Alderman Vegas also has proposed resolution to call for hearings on local government support for undocumented immigrant workers and taxpayers excluded from recent federal stimulus payment, which is referred to Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development. Alderman Cardona has proposed order for the issuance of permits for assigned signboard at 4,000 West Diversey Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Urban has proposed resolution for designation of March 4 annually as Jean Baptiste Pointe du Sabre Day, which is referred to Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Alderman Burnett has proposed ordinance to close the traffic portion of West Ohio Street and North Rockwell, Rockwell Street, which is referred to Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alderman Burnett also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for assigned signboards at 805 West Randolph Street, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Maldonado has proposed resolution to call for funding of Critical Health Network Vaccination Coalition to develop extensive vaccination program to assist vulnerable communities most affected by COVID-19, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Maldonado and others have proposed resolution to call for Illinois legislators to endorse Puerto Rico Self-Determination Act, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Sichu Lopez has proposed ordinance for approval of plan of Park 1 re-subdivision, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Sichu Lopez also has proposed resolution to call for the U.S. Congress to pass HR 1435, the American Right to Family Act, which is referred to Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Alderman Sichu Lopez also has proposed ordinance for establishment of mass public vaccination sites, community health brigade networks, and workplace brigades directly operated and staffed by Chicago Department of Public Health, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations.
Health and Human Relations.
Two committees called, the matters referred to the Committee on Rules. Alderman Sichu Lopez also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Sichu Lopez and others have proposed resolution for expression of support for Whole Foods workers' demands to reinstate hazard pay, health benefits to part-time employees, and 15-minute breaks for employees, which is referred to Committee on Workforce Development. Alderman Sichu Lopez and others also have proposed resolution to call for establishment of elected Chicago School Board for District 299, which is referred to Committee on Education and Child Development.
Budget.
Budget.
Two committees called, the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Sichu Lopez and others have proposed ordinance for reimbursement of liquor license fees with federal stimulus aid, which is referred to Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development. Alderman Scott has proposed order for amendment of Municipal Code Section 4-60-022 and 4-60-023 to disallow additional alcoholic liquor and packaged goods licenses on portion of various public ways within the 24th ward, which are referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Rodriguez and others have proposed resolution to call for the U.S. Congress to pass HR 6422, the National Infrastructure Bank Act of 2020, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Curtis has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 8,500 South Plasky Road, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Burke has proposed orders for non-honorary street designation as Guadalupe and Maria Lopez Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Cardenas has proposed orders for amendment of Municipal Code Chapters 10-20 and 10-32 to modify permit requirements for tree planting on public way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Cardenas also has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 1,300 West 35th Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Thompson has proposed orders for approval of time extension for a plan of Liberty re-subdivision, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Beal has proposed ordinance for amendment of Municipal Code Chapters 9-100 and 9-101 to further regulate automatic speed enforcement system, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way.
Pedestrian and traffic safety, Peter.
Two committees called, the matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman King has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 714 South Wawash Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Hopkins has proposed orders for amendment of Municipal Code Chapter 2-120 by repealing Section 2-120-660 regarding historical landmark designation of buildings owned or used by religious organizations, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Hopkins also has proposed orders for amendment of Municipal Code Chapter 5-12 to further regulate residential landlord and tenant ordinance, referred to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Alderman Hopkins also has proposed orders for designation of the 42nd precinct of the 2nd Ward as a restricted cannabis zone prohibiting new or additional cultivation centers, craft growers, and processing, infuser, dispensing, and transporting organizations, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Hopkins also has proposed order for historical landmark fee waiver for the property at 26 West Chestnut Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Lasparra has proposed resolution to call for hearings on current policy of providing emergency shelter for Chicago's homeless population during extreme cold, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Lasparra also has proposed resolution calling for hearings on licensing loopholes involving third-party peer-to-peer marketplaces for event spaces, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Lasparra also has proposed order for historical landmark fee waiver for the property at 1913 North Humboldt Boulevard, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Lasparra and others have proposed resolution to call for hearings on sanitation service disruptions due to extreme winter weather, which is referred to a joint committee comprised of the members of the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy and the members of the Committee on Ethics and Governmental Oversight. And Alderman Lasparra and others also have proposed resolution to call for hearings on transportation network provider responses to driver safety, which is referred to a joint committee on the Committee on License and Consumer Protection and the Committee on Public Safety. Your Honor, that concludes the automatic introductions.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next up is the approval of the Journal, Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell, I think we're having some difficulty hearing you.
You can hear me now?
Yes.
I'm not aware of any corrections to the Journal and move that to be approved by the same roll call vote as was applied to determine qualm.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Unfinished business. Alderman Mitchell, I believe there's one item of unfinished business.
Reg, Madam President, I am aware of one item of unfinished business that was noticed pursuant to Rule 41. It is a substitute resolution concerning the recognition of India's 74th anniversary of Independence Day and a call for condemnation of violence against certain castes and faith groups. I defer to Alderman Haddon.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Haddon.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to my colleagues. For months now, we've heard from public commenters about this resolution, Resolution 2020-583, celebrating India's democracy. I introduced the original non-binding resolution in July. After hearing concerns from the Indian government, my office, working with the Chicago Coalition for Human Rights in India, agreed to make some changes out of consideration for those concerns. Our substitute resolution passed committee unanimously in February. Some of my colleagues have told me that they don't feel comfortable voting on a resolution because they don't have a good understanding of the issues being brought to them, and I get it. When 49th Ward residents brought me this request, I was hesitant. But after reading about the issue and seeing the threats to democracy that mirrored some of what we had been experiencing under the Trump administration, it was clear that speaking up on behalf of residents who asked me to serve as their voice was the right thing to do. Our resolution states a few simple facts. India is the world's largest democracy. India has been a wonderful, valued partner with our country and the city of Chicago. We celebrate India and its achievements. And also, democracies live or die on the issue of governments respecting the rights of citizens to live free from oppression. Religious oppression, oppression based on skin color, class, or caste have no place in a healthy democracy. Not here, not anywhere. Moreover, language in this resolution is reflective of the current position of President Joe Biden and our current federal government, and the language of our ordinance mirrors some of the very language on Biden's website. To those who think it is not the place of Chicago City Council to use our platform to speak out on issues outside of our city, specifically when our residents bring these issues to our attention, I ask you to consider an example in 1984, when then 29th Ward Alderman, now Congressman Danny Davis, entered a resolution in council condemning apartheid in South Africa that also passed. I've met with India's Council General. I gather many of you have once well, and I respect the right of a sovereign nation to lobby for their own behalf and their own benefit. I've also met with many people organizing the opposition to this non-binding resolution over the last couple of months because I respect others' rights to dissenting opinions and views. It makes for a healthy democracy. The main argument that they've brought to me as to why I should withdraw this resolution was that bringing up these issues causes conflict or disharmony here. The intent was never to cause disharmony. And if you look at the language of the resolution itself, you'll see that this is clear. And the support that I've heard has been unwavering and strong. The residents who are asking you to vote yes in support of this resolution are doing so because their voices and the voices of their families are being silenced. As a black woman, my family and I are very familiar with hearing arguments from people who don't want us to bring up issues or talk about systemic oppression because it, quote-unquote, "creates conflict." Religious freedom, freedom from persecution based on class, class, or race are core tenets of democracy and are worth defending. I say thank you to Chicago South Asian community and to the residents of my ward who asked me to lift up and amplify their voices on this issue and trusted me to see it through. I ask my colleagues for your support on this, and if there are no other comments, Madam President, I move passage of this resolution by the first favorable roll call on the Committee on Finance.
Alderman Cardenas. The Chair recognizes, sorry, the Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wish to be recorded as not in support of this item. I'm all in favor of us taking large positions using our soapbox. But this is a very divisive issue. My offices, I'm sure many of yours, have received thousands, thousands of people communicating with us overwhelmingly in opposition to this resolution. Yes, the Council General of India has reached out. That is how much this impacts a broader community and a broader discussion. And if we cannot hold it to be more inclusive of a conversation of the greater Indian community, then I would ask my colleagues to vote no on this item and to do so by a roll call vote. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll begin voting no on this, and let me explain why. Nationalism is on the rise here and abroad. In this case, we have a Prime Minister Modi, who is ruler of India, and he's the Trump-like of India, stoking nationalism. And I think for us to take sides in this issue will further divide our local communities, both Hindu and Muslim. You know, leadership, world leadership, I guess, from Prime Minister Modi is to be condemned. And the reason why the, I think, the resolution landed in the council is because Congress has failed to pass a resolution in the Foreign Affairs Committee condemning Prime Minister Modi for his tactics and Kashmir takeover. And, you know, for us, it's difficult because we've been, obviously, with many calls, flooded with many calls, our offices, we've not been able to do our day-to-day functions in the ward because we've been having calls from Hindus and Muslims and others that care about this resolution. And, you know, I don't want to minimize this. It's an important issue, obviously, for those communities, and it's a global issue that I think Congress is going to deal with it sooner or later, you know, at the proper level, State Department and the Foreign Affairs Committee and the Congress. And our congressmen are probably going to take the issue up, and they should. But think of this, think of, if we take this on, why not take on the Chinese-Uighur ethnic cleansing conflict debate? Why not deal with Israeli-Palestinian conflict? How about Boko Haram in Nigeria and the exploitation of women and the raping of women in Pelechino villages? And we go on and on because there's many, many issues that I think are important. We are a global city. I consider us a global city. But we have many pressing issues here at home that need our attention. And I love to debate these issues. I love the area of international affairs. I studied it, and I love it. But I think, in my opinion, in my humble opinion, this is a place that I think we could hear a resolution and be pro or against it, but not divisive. I would be remiss if I don't recognize the fact that we've done many resolutions in this council. Apartheid is different than this. I don't equate those two. I really don't. And, you know, that's why I can't support it. I think we ought to be uniting our communities and getting them together to talk about their own conflicts and, you know, not fuel it. So thank you for listening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Talia Farah.
Thank you, Madam President. As a matter of, as a matter of order, Madam President, is the Law Department available to opine as to whether or the effects of a no vote or an extension of vote in comparison to those two as an outcome on a favorable vote? Is the Law Department available?
Let me confer with the parliamentarian. In response to the question, I'm advised by the parliamentarian, and we remind members that if you are present, you are required to vote yes or no. And in this circumstance, present means And in this circumstance, present means you are in your chair and you are available to vote. So if you are in your chair, at the time that the roll call is called and there has been a request for a roll call, you are entitled, you are required to vote yes or vote no. There is no voting present.
Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Talia Farah, does that answer your question?
It does, Madam President. Thank you.
Okay. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President. I had the opportunity to travel to India several years ago with a group called the American Council of Young Political Leaders. Of course, that's when I was younger. And I went with a bunch of young elected officials from around the country, Democrats and Republicans. And we get to India and we're hosted by different political parties in India, the BJP, the TDP, the Congress Party, you know, all of them. And they take us to a gathering that evening. And the only thing they can talk about to us is, why is your president involved in India? They was like, why is, why are they involved with Kashmir? Why are they involved with us fighting our brothers or our brothers and us not agreeing with each other? They were like, this is not your business. And, you know, we was like dumbfounded because we didn't know what they were talking about. But they were like, this is not your business. This is a civil thing with us in India and it's none of you all's business to get involved. And we were hearing this from elected officials from across India, basically telling us, Hindus and Muslims basically telling us, let us fight our thing out, man. Stay out of our business. So I feel like this is their business and I'm going to be voting no on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lasparra.
Thank you, Chair. I'm very proud to stand in support of this resolution and with Alderman Hadden. It is frequently said, this isn't, this isn't our work. This is for another level to consider. It should be done at the federal level or the state level. We're told there's always another campaign. This is about our voices. This is about our solidarity. Solidarity never says we should stay out of this. Solidarity says there is oppression and injustice and intolerance happening and we stand on the side of the oppressed. That, that is our work. That is, that's the choice that we're making today. I have the profoundest respect for Alderman Hadden, for hearing the cries of oppression in her community, for her choosing to stand in that solidarity. And that is the decision today. It's not whether there are other fights elsewhere, other issues to be considered. It is the issue in front of us today and whether we choose to stand in solidarity with those who are being discriminated against. That is where my yes vote is coming from today. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to commend my colleague, Alderwoman Maria Hadden, for her courage in standing with the people of India. I want to say that leadership is about making decisions, is about taking positions. And the idea that because we're in city council in Chicago and we're not in India and we cannot take a position on an issue of justice is very problematic to me. I think that internationalism is a value that we need to cultivate. We are definitely a city that welcomes immigrants. We are a city that is made out of people from everywhere. And we should be learning what is happening in all of these countries. We should know where we stand in these issues. So I am a yes in this resolution and I invite my colleagues to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Sixo Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I also would like to rise in support of the resolution introduced by Alderwoman Hadden. I also want to commend her for standing up for her constituents on a civil rights issue that affects, of course, also our own communities here of Indian descent. I think that we cannot be, we cannot be silent when we see injustices in, in, in other, in other communities and that affect us. We have constituents that are being affected and they want to make sure that we take a position on a civil rights matter, a matter that should be concerned to all of us. Injustices anywhere, injustices everywhere. I do think our council has a moral obligation to take stances. And resolutions like this are important because there are moral documents. Making sure that we condemn oppression, that we condemn violations to civil rights wherever they occur, including here in our own city. It is very important that we weigh in because this makes sure that it sends a message to our constituents that we care, that we're looking into. There are conversations happening at the federal level. They're happening in every level of government. And our council has a responsibility with every single community. We have seen, and I'm glad Alderman Tony has also introduced a resolution to condemn anti-African hate crimes. It's very important that we weigh in in these issues, that we condemn racism wherever that is, that we condemn injustices wherever they occur. And I'm glad our colleague, Alderwoman Hadden, is taking a stance on this. I urge our colleagues, we need to start weighing into these issues and not getting lobbied by special interest groups so that we don't do what is right and we're spared to analyze issues. This is an issue that affects constituents in all communities who have families, who live in India, who have, who have relationships. And we need to make sure that we do this. I really want to urge our colleagues to make sure that we take action on an issue that is very clear-cut. We got to stand on the rights, on the side of civil rights and we have to stand on the side of justice. And thank you, Alderwoman Hadden, for taking on this issue. We commend your leadership.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand with my colleague, Alderwoman Hadden, on this resolution. A resolution that's supported by Congresswoman Shikowsky, Congressman Newman, and my Congressman, Jesus Chui Garcia. I thank them for adding their voice. And I want to reiterate something that my colleague said that was in my planned remarks. And I think it bears reiterating, stating again. A threat to justice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And over our decades as a country, we know we have a history in which we have looked the other way. A very rich history of looking the other way. And we shouldn't look the other way and use the excuse that this is not in our backyard, so it's not our business. I thank you, Alderwoman Hadden, for being strong on this, for gathering the support of our, some of our congressional delegation. You know, bottom line is, this resolution should not be deemed offensive. This resolution is rather very simple in its complexity. And I urge a yes vote for justice from my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. I want to note that President Biden has come out and criticized Prime Minister Modi. As my colleague Alderman Rodriguez noted, members of our congressional delegation have come forward and supported this resolution and also decried the actions of Prime Minister Modi. This is the right position that we should be taking as a Chicago City Council. It recognizes, as Alderman Mike Rodriguez also stated, the words of Dr. Martin Luther King, that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. We cannot remain silent when we see hatred and racism and bigotry being promoted by the Indian government. We have a responsibility to stand up. And I'm shocked to hear some of our colleagues recognize that Prime Minister Modi is the Trump of India. But in that same breath, saying, well, I'm not going to pick a side. And I'm shocked to hear some of my colleagues say that we should just let them figure it out. What if we had done that as a council when apartheid was being debated, fought against in South Africa? What if the white supremacists in South Africa had come to us and lobbied us and said, well, let us figure it out. It's too controversial an issue. Don't pick a side. We have a responsibility to stand on the side of justice. And that's why San Francisco, that's why Seattle, two major American cities, progressive cities, democratic cities, have stood with the Indian people and said no to the racist backwards policy of Prime Minister Modi. Prime Minister Modi's policies are the ones that are promoting hatred and violence in India, not the people that are denouncing it. That is gaslighting. That is a distortion of the reality to say that people that are denouncing policies that cause racism are the ones that are therefore then promoting racism. We see white supremacists and extremists do this to people in the United States all the time. When we try and talk about racism, they tell us that somehow we are the ones that are causing discord when we're fighting for justice. So Dr. Martin Luther King, one of the greatest all-Americans, said that silence is betrayal. We cannot remain silent on this issue. We've got to take a stand. And we should join President Biden. We should join members of our congressional delegation. We should join Seattle and San Francisco in standing up for human rights in India. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam President. I won't add much more to what has been so eloquently put by my colleagues in support of this resolution. I want to commend Alderwoman Maria Hadden really for carrying this through a, a long amount of time and having a lot of opposition to it. It shows a lot of resolve and a lot of representation and solidarity for groups that have been oppressed otherwise. And I think it's absolutely in our responsibility to be able to call that out because injustice should not be protected by any borders. And when we think about, you know, trying to say that this is somebody else's fight and we should stay out of it, it's just something that, as a sister city to New Delhi, as a country that has had our own problems with racism and xenophobia, we should be calling that out across the board and be open to when it's called out from our country. And so to have to separate things in any manner and to say, oh, we can't speak on that based on where something is located is just unjust in general. I think it makes perfect sense for folks who want to decide to not be in support. They have every right to do that, just as we have every right to be in support. And, you know, in speaking to the Council General of India and some of the other people in opposition, I thank them for raising the conversation and having the dialogue. But we do know what we have to stand for and it is justice and standing for those that have been oppressed anywhere in the world. And as a global city, we should do that. So I am in support and I urge our colleagues to be in support as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I want to commend Alderman Maria Hadden for taking this on. For me, anytime I hear about any injustice, I'm, I'm, I sign on to it. Then I look into it and hopefully delve and get the information. But when there's not sometimes enough information for me, just as I tell my constituents, some of my relatives who don't get into politics, I say, trust me because I'm looking at certain issues. I'm, I'm, I'm delving into them. So trust my leadership, trust my opinion. So I have advisors and friends. I'm not so keen on lobbyists. So while I got many, many letters to say vote no for though this, I didn't know those folks. And I still wanted to support it because my colleague Maria Hadden, who I know has a good heart and want to do the right thing, hopefully looked at that issue. But when a very good friend of mine, who I've known for years, who I know has a heart of gold, and we've all constantly had these conversations about injustices, asked me not to vote no for this, I had to give him a call and understand why. When he began to break this down to me, it was so complex that I needed to say, almost say, I need a subject matter hearing on this because I don't want to be on the wrong side of the issue here. And as it was just stated in the city council, we cannot abstain. And since we cannot abstain, we have to be strong enough to take a position. And because he's someone that I trust, who's a voice of passion that I've always trusted on the, in the Indian community, and he asked me not to support this, I have to say no because I don't have enough information to say yes to go against somebody that I trust. But I have no doubt that my colleague Maria Hadden is feeling and doing what she thinks is best. And yes, an injustice anywhere is an injustice everywhere, but I don't fully have a grasp of that injustice. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't mean to belabor this point, but just felt the need to say a couple things. A lot of it was said. Alderman Cardenas really hit the spot very well, Alderman. Thank you for what you said. And I too don't want to minimize what's going on, but there's atrocities going on all over the world. This is something we're going to be, every meeting and looking into this stuff and weighing in on it. I still, I just don't think it's our business to weigh in on this. I too, like everybody else, was inundated with calls and emails and whatever else. But once again, like my good friend Alderman Moore said, when people that you, in your community, reach out to you, people that you believe in, trust in, you know, they're good, hardworking, honest people, whatever, ask for your support, I feel that I have to give them my support. So I think this is a, just not a good thing for us to get involved with. And I just want to weigh in one last time. I don't mean to pick a fight with you, Mayor, but I don't see how, if somebody doesn't vote, that, that would count as a yes or a no because people are off of this, people are out of this meeting by now. So people have already left. It's now, it's already 2:30. So I don't know if, you know, if you see them, they're not saying nothing, that's one thing. But if they're not here, I mean, if it ends up being 21 to 19, one way or another, and 10 people didn't vote, I don't think the 21 carries because you didn't get enough votes. That's all I have to say. I debated this with legal counsel. I guess we'll find out somewhere down the line who's right and who's wrong. But I appreciate everybody's comments and I will be voting no. Thank you very much, Madam President.
In light of Alderman Spazato's last comments, I feel compelled to, to remind the council the following. Rule 14, the first paragraph says, and I quote, "Every member who shall be present when a question is slated from the chair shall vote thereon unless excused by the council," end quote. That is the basis that the parliamentarian has indicated. You must vote yes, you must vote no if you are present. There is no provision in the city council rules for voting present or being in your seat and remaining silent. Those are your rules. The last hand that I see is Jason Irvin.
All right, for the marathon as we continue to go. Two things. One, to make a comparison of apartheid to this is absolutely inappropriate. You talk about apartheid, you talk about a majority of being totally suppressed in their desires to be free and to live a peaceful life. It just seems like every time there's something pops up, they want to put the black experience into whatever their equation is. Let's talk about oppression. Let's talk about things. And we could talk about that. I can look right outside this window here and talk about that right here on the west side of Chicago. Before we go jumping across the water, as they say, charity begins at home. And we need to be focusing our full-time effort and energy on helping young black boys close the achievement gap, to help our young women figure out the murders of young black women. There's a lot that we could be doing with our time, efforts, energy, and power. I don't have any ard against the Alderman of the 49th Ward for bringing this forward as a matter for her constituents. That's her right. But also, we must, as a city, focus on the energies and challenges and problems that we have here. And just as Alderman Moore, I have constituents in the Indian community that live in the 28th Ward and the majority of them are not supportive of the resolution. And again, I think we have more than enough work in the city of Chicago. If we want to talk about oppression, we want to talk about racism. If we want to talk about oppression, we want to talk about racism, we want to talk about, you know, other issues that have impacted members of the community. But again, I understand that people have a right to propose any type of legislation that they wish. However, unfortunately, we would not support this because, again, I look out this window and I see young men and young women that don't have jobs. I see young men and young women that can barely read. I see young men and young women that have lost a level of hope. And I don't think that they would appreciate their Alderman focusing on what's going on 8,000 miles away when I got challenges two blocks from the door that I live. So with that, I unfortunately will not be supporting this matter. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. This would be my second time, but it's a procedural item to make. So I don't know if you want to proceed with Chairman Osterman first?
Thank you for that. You called for a roll call. Let's go to Chairman Osterman, and then if there's no other comments from anybody who hasn't spoke, let's do a roll call vote.
I appreciate Alderman Lopez yielding me his time. I just really wanted to say that I, I really want to support what Alderman Jason Irvin said about his community and communities on the south side. I think that what he sees outside of his window is all of our issue, and we should focus on it like a laser. So I think, I understand Alderman Haddon's position on this. I'll be supporting this with her, but we've got real work to do in Chicago that affects us all, specifically in communities on the south and west side. And I think, I just want to say that that's something that is important for me, and I look forward to working with my colleagues on those issues that affect us all.
Thank you, Alderman Osterman. Alderman King, you're the last person to raise your hand, so we'll have you speak, and then we'll have a roll call vote. We're two and a half, four and a half hours into this city council meeting. I think we need to move on to other business.
No, thank you, Madam President. You know, I wasn't planning on, on speaking about this, and I certainly agree that, that we should focus on priorities here in the city of Chicago. I honestly don't think that we bring up some of the priorities, most of the priorities that we should be talking about in the city council. And so we should, we should seek to do that. There are a lot of concerns right here in our backyard. In fact, when I spoke with the Consul General of India, he used that by saying, you know, "Well, what if we were to point out the things that were going on here, the high crime, the shootings?" And I thought about it, and I said, you know, I would actually welcome that. I think, you know, we need to recognize our issues, and that doesn't excuse other issues. You know, when you talk about whether it's a family issue or not, I agree, I believe in family, but sometimes, you know, we need to step in and rescue people from the outside that are in families that can't be rescued. You know, and it came here right on in the United States. I mean, you know, Trump and Modi were, were best friends. You know, they had a rally together, and we know, you know, what hate that Trump spewed. So I don't think that we can ignore what's going on in other countries. And this is here before us today, and we're supposed to decide today whether we agree with it or not. It is perhaps not a priority within the context of our city, but it is before us today. So, you know, I appreciate Alderman Haddon's courage because there have been a lot of loud voices. That doesn't mean there are right voices, and I will be supporting this resolution. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. In recognizing that there are only 43 members on the Zoom call now, I'd like to call a quorum before we go to the roll.
Lopez, with due respect, I would urge you to withdraw your motion for a quorum. I can see the members of the body, a vast majority of the members are logged on, and to have a quorum call then followed by a roll call seems redundant and unnecessary. But if you want to put your colleagues through that, obviously, that is your call. But I don't, I don't believe based upon looking at the number of people that are logged on to this call that a quorum call is necessary. But again, if you want to put your colleagues through a quorum call followed by a roll call, then by all means, sir.
Thank you.
What is your pleasure? What is your pleasure, sir?
Quorum call, please.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Alderman Lasparra.
Here.
Alderman Hopkins.
Present.
Alderman Dowell.
Here.
Alderman King. Alderman King.
I apologize, muted. Present.
Alderman Hairston.
Present.
Alderman Sawyer.
Right here.
Alderman Mitchell.
Present.
Alderman Harris.
Here.
Alderman Beal.
Yep.
Alderman Sidloski Garza.
Still here.
Alderman Thompson.
Here.
Alderman Cardenas.
Here.
Alderman Quinn.
Here.
Alderman Burke. Alderman Burke. Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Burke is here. I'm sorry, I was trying to unmute.
Alderman Coleman.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Present.
Alderman Curtis.
Right here.
Alderman O'Shea.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here, whenever going home.
Alderman Brookins. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez.
Gleefully here.
Alderman Tavares.
Here.
Alderman Scott. Alderman Scott. Alderman Sichu Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Maldonado.
Here.
Alderman Burnett.
Here.
Alderman Irvin.
Here.
Alderman Talafiaro.
Present.
Alderman Ravoyes.
Present.
Alderman Cardona.
Present.
Alderman Wagisback.
Here.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Presente.
Alderman Austin.
Here.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
I'm here.
Alderman Vegas.
Present.
Alderman Vegas.
Present.
Alderman Mits.
Present.
Alderman Spazato.
Nick Spazato is here.
Alderman Nugent. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Vasquez.
I'm still standing here.
Alderman Apolitano.
Present.
Alderman Riley.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Tony. Alderman Tony. Alderman Gardner.
Present.
Alderman Keppelman. Alderman Keppelman. Alderman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Osterman.
Present.
Alderman Haddon.
Present.
Alderman Silverstein. Alderman Silverstein. Your Honor, there are 44 members present.
And with 44 members, Peter, is that a quorum?
Yes, the quorum is 26.
Yeah, that's what I thought. 26 is a quorum, correct?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on this resolution.
Alderman Lasparra.
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins.
No.
Alderman Hopkins votes no. Alderman Dowell.
No.
Alderman Dowell votes no. Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman King votes yea. Alderman Hairston.
Aye.
Alderman Hairston votes yea. Alderman Sawyer.
Aye.
Alderman Sawyer votes yea. Alderman Mitchell.
No.
Alderman Mitchell votes nay. Alderman Harris.
No.
Alderman Harris votes nay. Alderman Beal.
No.
Alderman Beal votes nay. Alderman Sidloski Garza.
Aye.
Alderman Sidloski Garza votes yea. Alderman Thompson.
No.
Alderman Thompson votes nay. Alderman Cardenas.
No.
Alderman Cardenas votes nay. Alderman Quinn.
No.
Alderman Quinn votes nay. Alderman Burke.
No.
Alderman Burke votes nay. Alderman Lopez.
I am a no.
Alderman Lopez votes nay. Alderman Coleman.
No.
Alderman Coleman votes nay. Alderman Moore.
No.
Alderman Moore votes nay. Alderman Curtis.
No.
Alderman Curtis votes nay. Alderman O'Shea.
No.
Alderman O'Shea votes nay. Alderman Taylor.
Yes.
Alderman Taylor votes yea. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez votes yea. Alderman Tavares.
Nay.
I'm sorry, Alderman.
No.
Alderman Tavares votes nay. Alderman Scott. Alderman Scott. Alderman Sichu Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Sichu Lopez votes yea. Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado votes yea. Alderman Burnett.
No.
Alderman Burnett votes nay. Alderman Irvin.
No.
Alderman Irvin votes nay. Alderman Talafiaro.
No.
Alderman Talafiaro votes nay. Alderman Ravoyes.
Said yes.
No.
Alderman Ravoyes votes nay. Cardona.
No.
Alderman Cardona votes nay. Alderman Wagisback.
Aye.
Alderman Wagisback?
That's a yes in a different language.
Alderman Wagisback votes yea. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez votes yea. Alderman Austin.
Oh.
Alderman Austin votes nay. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Yes.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa votes yea. Alderman Vegas.
No.
Alderman Vegas votes nay. Alderman Mits.
No.
Alderman Mits votes nay. Alderman Spazato.
Nick Spazato votes no.
Alderman Spazato votes nay. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Vasquez.
Aye.
Alderman Vasquez votes yea. Alderman Apolitano.
No.
Alderman Apolitano votes nay. Alderman Riley. Alderman Riley. Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Smith votes yea. Alderman Tony. Alderman Tony. Alderman Gardner.
No.
Alderman Gardner votes nay. Alderman Keppelman. Alderman Keppelman. Alderman Martin.
Yes.
Alderman Martin votes yea. Alderman Osterman.
Aye.
Alderman Osterman votes yea. Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon votes yea. Alderman Silverstein. Alderman Silverstein.
The chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Alderman Riley votes yea.
Alderman Riley votes yea. Your Honor, there are 18 yae's and 26 nays.
The resolution fails.
Madam President, I would move to reconsider the vote.
Whoa, whoa.
You can't.
You voted in the majority.
Correct. We won.
Madam President. We are so fun.
The chair recognizes Alderman Cardinals on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the motion.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Say nay.
No.
Those have it, the motion for reconsideration fails. Alderman Mitchell, is there any other unfinished business?
Madam President, I am not aware of any unfinished business.
The chair recognizes Alderman Mits.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I wanted to report that on item number 02021-1215 that was being read by the clerk, it was an ordinance for buying Sichu Lopez, was going to capital improvement, economics and capital to improvement. I called for that to go to license. I didn't hear Peter respond, so I wasn't sure if he heard that, but I've been made aware that it was recorded, did I see it licensed?
Mr. Clerk.
Your Honor, we will record that into the record.
All right.
Thank you.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, we're moving on to miscellaneous business. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I am not aware of any miscellaneous business.
Date and time of the next meeting?
Yeah, provided an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting with the city council for Wednesday, April 21st, 2021 at 10:00 a.m.
Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
read by the city council in the city of Chicago. Section 1, because an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to COVID-19, the next regular meeting of the city council, in accordance with applicable law, shall be conducted by video conference on Wednesday, April 21st, 2021, beginning at 10:00 a.m., and shall provide for remote participation and remote viewing by members of the public. If prior to then, the commissioner of health issues a written determination that the city council can safely proceed with an in-person meeting, the meeting will be held at a location to be determined that can safely accommodate a city council meeting. Any such written determination will be posted along with an amended heading agenda, which will include a fixed location by 10:00 a.m. on Monday, April 19th, 2021. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is my sincere hope that we will be back in person at the April meeting. You will be receiving a briefing in the coming days. We welcome your feedback on a plan to bring everybody back and do it safely in accordance with public health guidance. Of course, there'll be an opportunity for those who have a need to remain remote, to participate remotely, so it will be a hybrid proposal that will be presented to you. And as, again, we welcome your feedback, but it's my sincere hope that we will be back in person.
Bravo.
The April meeting.
All right.
Chairman, Alderman Mitchell, do you move passage in the omnibus?
Move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. The omnibus, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move that matters in the omnibus, pass same roll call vote as was used to determine the first quorum.
Thank you for the clarification. Hearing no objection, so ordered. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion that we, right, I'm sorry, I move that we reconsider each and every vote there and the last one.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration of the matters in the omnibus, signify by saying aye. All those opposed to the motion for reconsideration of all the items in the omnibus, say nay.
Nay.
No way, ever.
The motion for reconsideration fails. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn by the same roll call vote as was applied to determine the first.
I was applied to determine the first quorum.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Ladies and gentlemen, be safe. For those of you who will be celebrating, one of the high holidays, whether it's Easter, whether it's Pesak or Ramadan, well, and we will see you in April. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right.